Appreciate everyone being here this evening. First item on our agenda is we're going to establish the fact that we have a quorum of our board team. We do have a quorum. We're kind of spread out, but Mr. Parker's not here this evening. He's taking a trip with his daughter who just got her master's degree, so they're traveling on their little daddy-daughter trip, so he won't be here this evening, but the rest of our board team's here. So that covers item one on our agenda. Item two is our invocation. We're honored this evening to have Mr. Ryan Buck. He's a senior pastor at Emmanuel Baptist Church, and he's going to lead us in our invocation. Pastor Buck, thank you for being here.
Well, thank you for the invitation. I'm a proud graduate of Lakeview High School, and I never imagined that I would be wanting my children to be Central Bobcats, but they're on their way. I got two at Glenn, and my wife's a teacher there, and it's an honor to be here with you this evening. So let's go to Lord in prayer. Father God, I thank you, Father, for, Lord, this incredible responsibility. Father, you have entrusted, Lord, to this board. Father, I ask, God, is, Lord, I know that it's been an incredible year to navigate, Father, Lord, an unprecedented crisis, Father, in San Angelo with, Lord, this pandemic. Father, I thank you, Father, for these leaders. But God, I ask, Father, that you would give them wisdom, Father, and, Lord, just, I know they have the gravity of understanding the stewardship that they have undertaken, Father, to care for so many children, Father, and all the decisions that need to be made. Father, it's incredible. So we ask God for your blessing. Lord God, we ask for your help. And, Father, we ask for your grace, Father, as they, Lord, wrap up a year, and I know already busy preparing for next, Father. Father, we love you, and, Lord, just ask for protection over the summer for the staff and the children, Father, as we get ready for a new year. We love you and pray this in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you being here. Our next item, we've got some great young students here from Reagan Elementary School, so I'll introduce them as they come up. So we have Xavier Johnson, and we have Cambry Sandoval, and we have Camila Sandoval. So if y'all will come forward, and everyone else will stand, we can join them in the pledges.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank y'all. Oh, and I just, hang on, hang on. Y'all don't leave. I told your parents they could come up and take pictures, you know, so. So just stand and face, you know? So Xavier and Cambry are fifth graders, and Camila's a third grader at Reagan. So thank y'all so much for being here.[224.01][224.01](Applause) It's always a pleasure when we get to, let me, I'll read our script first before we get started, and then we'll start with our recognitions. Good evening and welcome. As the president of the Board of Trustees of the San Angelo Independent School District, I'd like to welcome all of you who are present at tonight's regular board meeting. Also welcome those of you who might be watching the tape of this meeting on our public access channel, Channel 4. We appreciate your interest in our students. All items that will be discussed at our meeting this evening have been posted as required by state law. Also, as you may be aware, our board meets a minimum of two times per month, and most if not all the items on our agenda this evening have been previously discussed in an earlier pre-agenda board workshop. As members of the San Angelo Independent School District's Board of Trustees, we're here to set goals, listen to reports from our superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the school district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in the public and not a meeting of the public. However, with that in mind, we have an item on each one of our meeting agendas that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our board team an opportunity to do so. I will make certain that we give everyone an opportunity to speak on any item not listed on our agenda this evening. Additionally, prior to taking any votes, I'll ask audience members if they would like to make any comments. Anyone wishing to make comments in either area, whether it's on our agenda or not on our agenda, they should do their best to limit their comments to five minutes. In compliance with Texas state law, these proceedings are recorded and will become a part of SEISD's permanent legal record. In order that the tape will adequately reflect our proceedings, I ask that you please refrain from talking while others might be speaking, and also ask that, as I remind my fellow board team members, to please turn off or silence your cell phones at this particular time. Again, it's my pleasure to welcome you to tonight's meeting. Thank you for taking the time to join us here this evening. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our students and the business of our school district. And with that being said, one of my favorite times during the school year is the opportunity that we have to recognize a number of our students. So about the last two or three months of the school year, we have a lot of students that have really accomplished a lot of great things during the school year. So we're going to start with those recognitions at this particular time, and I guess I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Gomez.
Thank you, Mr. Lehman, Dr. Detloff, and members of the board. So we have several coaches connected. We have parents and students connected to Facebook Live. So our coaches that are connected on Zoom, if you guys can give us a thumbs up, we can see you on the TV and the TVs in the boardroom. Can you guys give us a thumbs up if you can hear now? How about we try Coach Penry? Can you try to unmute Coach Penry? We can see if our sound is working?
Can you hear me?
Absolutely. Okay, so I think we're good here. Coach Chant, would you like to come up first?
All right, board members, Dr. Detloff. Wow, what a, what a school year all the way around, and what a challenging one for athletics as a whole. A great spring for all of our teams. I'm proud to say that we were able to get through the spring without having to cancel any ballgames due to COVID, due to the work of our coaches and our students and being proactive and doing what they need to do so they could continue to play throughout the spring. And so it was a great year, and I'm just ecstatic of the results of our teams. So first off, we're going to start virtually, and I'm going to, our coaches know the order, but first off, we're going to start with Coach Viegas with Central High School Boys Basketball. Coach Viegas?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Coach Chant, and thank you for allowing us to speak tonight. This is kind of the funnest part about the whole season, is we have a chance to talk about our kids, so we want to thank you for that. I'm Coach CJ Viegas, the head boys' basketball coach at Central High School. My varsity assistant is Jamal Anine. JV coach this year was Jonathan Alexander. Our freshman orange coach is Steven Londerholm, and our freshman blue coach was Coach Al Lara. So that made up our coaches staff this season. We finished the season 15-12, season record, finished fourth place in district, and then we ended up bowing out to El Paso Americas in the first round. So a little bit about our kids, or some of the awards that were received from our season this year. First team, all district, Brandon Campbell, he's going to, he's a junior this year. Also receiving first team, all district is Chase Fields, he's a junior as well. Receiving second team, all district is Benson Lara, and Benson is a senior this year. And then also receiving second team is Raven Ortiz. All to our honorable mention, junior Joseph Roe Pierce, sophomore Jacob English, sophomore Jacoby Yates, and sophomore Jaden Gibson. So that made up our accolades for our season, our all-district honors. And then the best part is thanking the, all of the administration for everything that they did for us this season. We greatly appreciate that. And then, as you heard, we have a, you know, a good group returning back, so we lose one out of the, out of this eight total. So we have seven returners coming back that have received an all-district award, so we're super excited about that in our season. So thank you once again. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Coach. Next up, Coach Penry.
I want to thank the board for allowing me to speak. Thanks, Mr. Lehman. I know you're, you're an alum of Central baseball, so I think these boys made you proud. I want to thank all the administration, Dr. Detloff, the athletics, Coach Chant, Coach Baker, Julie and Jessica, for supporting all of athletics and the baseball team at Central. I also want to thank Coach Pratt before I move on, because our trainer and his helper, David, he helped us, and we kept those guys busy a little bit this year, so we appreciate their help. My coaching staff, BJ Patello, Mickey Scott, Chris Weber, and Zach Laura, those guys brought the energy and always stayed positive through everything, so a big thank you to those guys. We, as well, have a bunch of guys coming back from a, from a team that, when we were doing our meetings just this week, we always look back at our schedule, and out of the teams that we played, only five teams didn't make the playoffs, and three of those were district opponents and were very good competition, and 10 of those teams are still playing in the playoffs. Unfortunate for us, we faced Montwood's ace who beat South Lake Carroll in the second round, so the season ended a little quick, but like I said, we got a good group coming back, several awards. Our first two sophomores, Landon Calley and Jacob Saldivar. We have 13 juniors coming back, Kayden Box, Traiton Snelson, Jacob Charles, Ethan Green, James Plackey, Ty Casey, Eduardo Luna, Juan Diego Laguna, Gavin Delauer, Garen Hart, Stroller Price, Kayden Hammeister, and Reed Sampson. The five seniors that we'll miss, hate to see these guys go, Thomas Overmiller, Dylan Abbott, Kysen Snelson, Nick Rivas, and Ron Ramon. The awards these guys got, we have several elected to the FCA All-Star Game, Dylan Abbott, Ron Ramon, Nick Rivas. Two guys that have signed currently, Kysen Snelson with Northern Oklahoma College, and Ron Ramon with Lynn College out in Arkansas. We had several on top of baseball scholarship, earned scholarships. The Umpires Association Scholarship went to Ron Ramon, and Derek Shepherd's Memorial Scholarship to Nick Rivas. And then our first team, all district, is Kysen Snelson. We had three second teamers, Dylan Abbott, Kayden Hammeister, Juan Diego Laguna, and an honorable mention in Reed Sampson. The, to finish up, we had three academic All-State, Ron Ramon and Kysen Snelson were honorable mention, and Dylan Abbott was first-team academic All-State. Extremely proud of the way these guys played all season long. We started off the season with tornado and water and snowstorm, which isn't real conducive for baseball weather by any means, but the tornado, definitely need to thank Mr. Creek and Sam for getting our facilities back up to be able to compete. So a big thank you to everybody in the district. Looking forward to next year, and thank you.
Thank you, Coach.[834.87][834.87](Applause) Coach Bueno?
Good afternoon to all. Thank you all who are on. Thank you, Ms. Gomez, for presenting us. Special thanks, you know, Dr. Detloff, to Coach Chant, Coach Baker, Ms. Ramirez, Ms. Quam, everybody at the administration building, everybody, all our principals at Lakeview, Coach Vanderberg, Coach Wildy, Coach Guevara, to everybody who's supported us. My name is Coach Harold Bueno. I'm the head baseball coach for the Chiefs for Lakeview. And first of all, I want to introduce our boys, who without them, I don't think any of us, you know, could be as successful as we all have been. Also, congratulations to all the players and to all the coaches for all the success y'all had this year. I have, we have three seniors that are leaving us this year. They were great with us, Cody High, Brandon Herrera, and Leo Carrillo. We have three sophomores coming, or three, I apologize, five juniors coming back, which is Kate Henry, Oscar Obregón, Alex Palacio, Jacob Chapa, JD Salgado. We have three sophomores returning, which would be Joseph Coffrin, Gary Cruz, and Adam Escalante. And then our two freshmen, which is Wyatt Henry and Nicolas Bustamante. Our coaches staff, I couldn't ask for two better guys, Coach Chase Hall and Coach Mark Arnold. One thing I would like to say about our team, our record at the beginning wasn't as well, but we ended up, the boys kept working, kept doing. I believe we made the playoffs, or Lakeview made the playoffs for the first time in over 13 years, so I think that was a great accomplishment of what it is. The boys never gave in, never listened to any naysayers, and just kept believing in themselves, and just kept working hard. We're looking forward to the returners and the ones coming up. Hopefully, we can continue to be able to do this recognition, which means we made the playoffs from now on. So I thank everybody who's out there that came out to support us and do some of those things. We really appreciate you, and thank you for everything.
Thank you, Coach.[1008.72][1008.72](Applause) Next up, Lakeview Golf.
Thank you, ma'am. I just want to say quite a few thanks to all the administration out there, our trainers, everyone who's been helping us out. It's been hard with the golf team over the last, last year, we didn't even have a district. We didn't get to go and play. We didn't get to compete, and so it, we took a pretty hard hit. It was like eight or nine months between tournaments for my girls, and so we had a really great season this year. We, after the first round of district, we were in third place, which if you know golf, the top two teams get to go to regionals. And so we were in third place by four strokes, and unfortunately, we didn't get to pull it out. But I had one member of my team, my only senior, Sarah Velez, was able to pull out a regional qualifier spot, and so she placed sixth overall, and that put her also in the all-district team and regional qualifier. She did great. It was just a fantastic season overall for her, and I'm super proud of her and the progress that she made this year, and I am really hopeful for next season, even though we'll be missing her. So, and that's it for Lakeview Golf. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Coach.[1104.13][1104.13](Applause) All right, Coach Cram?
Yes, thank you, guys, for everything that you guys have done this year so far. Coach Chant, Coach Baker, and then Julie and Jessica in the athletic office. We couldn't have done any of this, this year without you guys. I want to go ahead and start with our girls qualifiers. We had five girls qualify for regionals in Monahans. We had one girl qualify for the state meet in Corpus. Our girls that qualified were Rebecca Dupree. She finished eighth place. Christine Martinez finished fifth place. Jalen DeHoyos finished seventh place. Marissa Luna, eleventh place. And Abigail Stevens, she finished first place in her weight class at the regional meet in Monahans, and she had the best deadlift at the regional meet. All of these girls will be coming back. They're all, we had one freshman, and the rest of them were juniors, so they'll all be back. And then, Abigail Stevens at the state meet, she finished eighth place in her weight class at the, at the state meet in Corpus, and that was her first time to get to go to it. She qualified last year, but due to COVID, we were unable to attend. So we were pretty excited about that. Looking forward to next year. Thank you all you guys in the boardroom there tonight for everything you guys have done for SEISD this school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Coach.[1194.83][1194.83](Applause) All right, Coach Mahia?
Can't tell if Coach Mahia is on by sharing my screen? Somebody else from Lakeview, can you confirm if Coach Mahia is on? There's Coach Chant. We'll let him in the room. All right, so here's for Lakeview Powerlifting with Coach Mahia. You can see he's the head coach. You can see his assistant coaches. Their girls powerlifting team. Their team accolades, third place in the Big Spring Invitational, third place in the Snyder Invitational. There's the regional qualifiers. Regional qualifiers in Monahans. Here's the boys. Oh, he's in now. I'm getting some messages. "We just can't hear you, Coach Mahia, so if you can unmute, we'd love to hear from you. You do a much better job than I would." Any luck on your sound, Coach Mahia? All right, while he's still working on his sound, here's the boys powerlifting team. Here's the boys regional qualifiers in Sundown Texas. And then your Holland's Award Excellence recipients, Yolanda Ramirez and Juan Ortiz. So Juan is a sophomore. We hope Juan will be returning. Coach Mahia, I probably owe you lunch because I didn't do this justice for you or your athletes.
Can you hear me?
Oh, perfect timing, Coach.
Dr. Gomez, can you hear us on Coach Mahia's?
Yes, now we can hear you.
All right. Hey, well, I'm sorry, Dr. Gomez. Sorry, everyone. Just to, you've gone through the slideshow well. Thank you very much. Thank you for, for, you know, supporting our program. Again, Sergio Plata is my assistant coach, and our athletic coordinator, Coach Guevara, and Mr. Det, Dr. Detloff, and Mr. Chant, and Mr. Baker, thank you for support, and Jessica and Julie, and Mr. Ramirez, our principal here. On the slide, you can see that our two Holland recipients, Juan Ortiz and Yolanda Ramirez. Yolanda is a senior. We'll be losing her this year. This year, we've only lost, we're losing three seniors. We have 34 total lifters in the program. We have four juniors, 18 sophomores, and nine freshmen, so we have good things coming. I hate to rush through it, but go ahead. We went through our accolades and, again, thank you. Thank you for all your support. School board, thank you for allowing us to speak tonight, and go Chiefs.
Thank you, Coach Mahia.[1425.51][1425.51](Applause)
Yes, she did go.
All right, Coach, now you'll want to mute.[1437.65][1437.65](Laughter) Okay, next up, Coach Avalas for Central Tennis.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Let me try to move this real quick. Can you hear me? Yes, sir. Just to make sure. Okay. Hey, I just wanted to say thank you to the admin. Thank you, everybody up there. Y'all really do take care of us. You provide us with awesome facilities. We're really privileged to have the things that we do have and the things that we keep getting for the future, and that allows us and our parents and our kids to feel good about the programs we're in and what we're doing. And I'm a firm believer in look good, feel good, play good. So, you know, thank y'all for everything you do. Thank you for taking care of us and going through all the measures, and I know it's time-consuming, and sometimes it's not always the funnest, but it has to be done. So thank you for everything that y'all do. We really appreciate it. I have to say thank you. My assistant coach, she's not here this evening, but she is a godsend. She helps every day. She's ready to go. She works hard. She'll do anything you need her to. So I want to say a huge thank you to Coach Creek and everything that she does. Without her, you know, she is the assistant coach, but she's part-time shrink as well, so it works out. And I want to say a huge thank you to our parents, you know. Thank you for buying into the program, and thank you for trusting us with your kids, and, you know, thank you for getting them to where they need to be, and all the donations and time and effort and everything that you have done. You know, it goes a long way, and so we want to thank y'all for that as well. Starting off, we're going to go with Senior Kelsey, my senior, Kelsey Bishop. She was the District 2 6A Girls Singles runner-up. She lost in the finals, and then we had to turn around and play a playback against our own teammate for second and third for that spot to go to regionals. It was a long match, quite a match. We didn't do any coaching. We just let them battle it out, and they went to a third set, and she came out on top. So she went to regional in that second-place spot, and she was the Region 1A 6A Girls Singles Regional Qualifier, and she is a senior, so I'd like to thank her for everything. Next up is our girls doubles. That pair is Trinity Fluger and Kenzie King. The girls had a tremendous season. They went 12-6 on the year. They medaled in quite a few tournaments. Trinity Fluger is a junior, and Kenzie King is a sophomore, and so we have a bright future with these girls, and they were the District 2 6A Girls Doubles runner-up. They lost in the finals to the Abilene High Girls, who are now going to state. They won regionals, and they will be participating at state this week. So we had a great run, and then they are the Regional 1 6A Girls Doubles Regional Qualifiers. We happened to run into Plano West first round at regionals, and both of the girls were committed to D1 schools, and they were very good athletes. So, you know, we had a heck of a ride, but we look forward to what they can do for next season. Up next is Cameron Coker and Sam Campasi. Cameron is a senior, and Sam is a junior. These boys worked tremendously hard. They were like the fifth seed at district. We knew they could do good things. They did great all year. They won their first round. The next round, they had to play the number-three seeded boys from Odessa High, and they beat them in a close match, and then we had to turn around and play the one seed to go into the finals, and we beat the one seed from Friendship, and that was exciting because we knew we could do it. And then we got to the finals, and we came up just a bit short in the third set against the Abilene High boys, but they were the District 2 6A Boys Doubles runner-up, and they were the Region 1 6A Boys Double Regional Qualifiers. Up next is Senior Hallie Jost and Senior Richie Ramos. Hallie and Richie had a tremendous season. I think they placed in the top three of every tournament, except for our first one, starting off in Lubbock, but they were 15-4 as a team going into district. They did tremendous things. They had a phenomenal senior season. They were our only team to make it to regionals that won a first-round match. They beat a team from Timber Creek, and then we ended up running up against the number-one seed from Plano West, and while we competed and hung in there, we came up just a bit short, but we were super proud of them and their efforts, and they were the District 2 6A Mixed Doubles runner-up, and they were the Region 1 6A Mixed Doubles Regional Qualifiers. Next, I just kind of want to give a shout-out to our alternates. Kaia Punk Savanthong, she had to play Kelsey Bishop in that playback, and she ended up getting third place, so she was the District 2 6A Girls third place, and then regional, she was the Region 1 6A Girls Regional Alternate. On the other side, we have Kaori Neal and Nate James. Kaori is a senior, and Nate is a sophomore. They were the District 2 6A Mixed Doubles third place, and they were the Region 1 6A Mixed Doubles Regional Alternates. They also had to have a playback against Hallie and Richie on the previous slide, and Hallie and Richie came out a little bit ahead, but for both of these kids, it was tremendous. And Kaia, they're, they're seniors. You can see the group picture here in the middle. These are all the kids that medaled that were either the regional qualifiers or alternates, and we took four out of five positions out of, out of those positions to the regional tournament. So we set high standards for ourselves for next year, but it's a tremendous thing when you can take that many kids and that many events to the regional level. It says something about your team and the depth, and we're going to miss our six- And we're gonna miss our six seniors in this group that are leaving us, but for the four that are coming back, we have high hopes and high goals. And we plan on doing what we can next year, maybe taking all five to Regionals. So, once again, thank y'all for everything you do and the support, and thank y'all.
Thank you, Coach. Lakeview Tennis?
Thank you, Dr. Gomez. Hi, I'm Coach Kendra Harmon, the head coach at Lakeview High School. I first wanted to start out with some thank-yous, I could probably go on and on thanking people. But I want to first thank my kids, because they are so flexible and coachable, they listen to anything I say. But they just have been awesome, especially with, you know, COVID and all the new rules that are coming out. So I want to thank them, most importantly. I also want to thank Coach Guevara, Coach Chan, Coach Baker for coming out and traveling and watching our matches. Also, Mr. Ramirez, the principal. I think, something that really is important to me and my kids as well, is, and that's something that's made us successful, is these three words that we go by. Pride, dedication, and family. These athletes come out every day with those three words in mind, and I think that truly has helped them get to where they are today. So, just to start off, I kind of want to introduce a couple of athletes that had awards this semester. So Eric Torres, senior, he ended up the district champion for boys' singles. His overall record was twenty-five and three, so he only lost three matches, which is incredible. He placed mostly first place in every single tournament, except for the Central Tournament that we played. He ended up as a Regional Qualifier, and he actually went to the semifinals out in Lubbock. Unfortunately, he started cramping really bad, I think he was up in the second set and didn't end up getting the win, but that's okay, semifinals is a huge accomplishment. So, he will be leaving us this year and he'll be missed, definitely, but he's going off to the Army, so I know he'll be super successful in that. So, there's some pictures of him, he likes to put a medal in his mouth, that's kind of like his thing, how he wants to take pictures, so. Next up, Elasia Cappaccina, she was the runner-up for girls' singles. Her overall record was nineteen and four, she placed first and second in all of the tournaments, for the most part. She was also the Hundred and Ten Percent Award recipient, she always put forth Hundred and Ten Percent in everything that she did. Super coachable, flexible, tried really hard, and she was also a Regional Qualifier. There's some pictures of her as well. Haley Torres, also a senior, she placed third in most all tournaments and also placed third overall in the District Tournament. She actually had to play one of her own teammates, Elasia, in a playback, and in that match, it was the longest match ever. But she ended up placing third, she lost to Elasia, but it was a super good match. She was also an alternate, so she got to go to Regionals as well. Lastly, is the girls' doubles team, Madison Getz and Veronica Morales, they were also district champs. They placed in all, first in all tournaments except for two, with an overall record of sixteen and four. They were Regional Qualifiers, but ended up playing Canyon in the first round and ended up losing in the first round. Also, something that was a huge accomplishment, the girls won the overall girls' award in our District Tournament. So, they received the most points out of all of our District teams, so we got this pretty plaque right here. But the girls' side was very strong, but all of those senior girls will be leaving me, but that's alright, they're gonna, we're gonna miss them. These are just the Regional, here's a picture of all the kids that we took to Regionals. Also, I did want to give a shout-out to my JV kids, we don't have that many JV kids, but every single kid placed in District. We had four District Champs, Gabby Flores for girls' singles, Seth Rangel for boys' singles, and Omar Ponse and John Hayes for boys' doubles. They all placed first in the District Tournament. Liz Mota placed second, she actually had to play Gabby and ended up losing to her, and then Kirdan Sherman placed third. So, future looks bright with all those medals. There's some pictures of them. The Hollands Award was awarded to Eric Torres, Gabby Flores, and Madison Getz, they were just all-around MVPs, leaders on and off the court. Hundred and Ten Percent Award went to Liz Mota and Elasia Cappaccina. And again, there are so many people to thank, we wouldn't be successful without them. Thanks to everybody, it truly does take a tribe to get us to where we're at, so thank you.
Thank you, Coach Harmon. Next up, Coach Meek with Central Boys Track.
Okay, so thanks a lot for letting us brag on our kids today, I think they all deserve some recognition for kind of, not only surviving, but thriving in this crazy year that we had post-pandemic. But also congratulations to all the coaches and athletes, and thanks for letting us brag on these kids, we really appreciate that. I'm just gonna mention our coaches, we are very fortunate that we share the coaching staff between the boys and girls, which makes it very nice. Pretty much, every event has a coach, and that's not real common, but it made for a great year for all of us. I'm just gonna mention them right quick, Jamal Lanin, Colton Buzzard, Freddie Davis, Rusty Fleeman, Marty Hauser. And of course Tiffany Meek is the head girls' coach, Richard Ramos, Josh Stevenson, Jake Ward, Julie Williams, and Josh Willis. You know, after the way last year went, after the way the season ended, we were looking for hopefully a little bit of normalcy this year. It started off that way, but then it went kind of crazy in February, and we ended up missing the first two meets because of the water issues and of course the crazy winter storm. Because of all that, we were limited to just three meets before District, and it usually felt like it takes six or seven meets to really get to the point where you feel like you know where everybody fits in. And so we had to kind of get all that done in three meets. Went to the big country relays in Abilene, West Texas relays in Odessa, and then our San Angelo relays here, and then we were fortunate that we got to host the District Meet. And at the District Meet here in San Angelo, we placed third as a team and advanced thirteen kids in nine events to the area meet. Then we went on to the area meet, and the boys really did have a really good meet. Thirteen boys who basically had never been beyond a District Meet, ended up only a few points out of winning the area meet. And there were only two boys who had any varsity experience before this year, so I said basically a group of rookie varsity athletes came really close to winning that area meet. I'm just kind of gonna go through, starting with the individual qualifiers and some of the field vendors. But Andres Diaz is a freshman, he was first-team All-District, being the District Champion in the 400-meter dash. Area qualifier and Regional Qualifier in the 400, the 4x1, and the 4x4. Jacob English is a sophomore high jumper, he won the majority of the meets this year, he was first-team All-District, one District, one area. And then he was a regional medalist, got third place at the Regional Meet. Tyler Hill is a sophomore, he was first-team All-District as a part of the 4x400-meter relay. He also qualified for area in the 400, and was an area qualifier and Regional Qualifier on the 4x400-meter relay. Riley Mendoza is a sophomore, we kind of started off and noticed early on that there weren't very many pole vaulters in the District. And so we moved him up a few weeks before District, hoping he might come in and score a point. And he came in and got fourth and scored four points and advanced to area, so we were super proud of him, and he's excited and ready to go for next year. Raven Ortiz is a junior, first-team All-District in the long jump, he was the District Champion in the long jump, area and Regional Qualifier in both long and triple. And he was a regional finalist in both jumps at Regionals, in the long jump, he was fourth, and I believe he was three, about three and a quarter inches out of second, which would have qualified him for the State Meet. And then he finished eighth in the triple jump at Regionals, which is an honor to make the finals. Andrea Sanchez is a junior, and he was the area qualifier in the Discus, area and Regionals, he ended up placing second at District and fourth at area. And then moving on to the relays, really excited about what the relays accomplished this year, this is our sprint relay, our 4x1. They ended up getting second at District, but they came back the next week in one area, and what was really exciting about it is that's two freshmen and two sophomores. Which doesn't happen a whole lot with boys, especially at the Six A level, so really excited about them and their future. Our 4x200-meter relay, I didn't mention the names in the 4x1, but the ones we just looked at, Jordan Weatherspoon, Andres Diaz, Landon Eubanks, and Colton Gossett. Okay, and so now back to the 4x2. Area qualifier and Regional Qualifier, Jordan Weatherspoon again, Hector Hecton, Cole McWilliams, and Malik Haywood, they were the area runners-up. And then our mile relay, our 4x4, they were District Champions and Area Champions, they were first-team All-District. And again, Jordan Weatherspoon led off that relay as well, Andres Diaz was second, Kentay Nichols was third, and Tyler Hill was anchor. And this is kind of an interesting fact I just want to throw in here, there are sixty schools in our region, and there were only three schools out of the entire region that had all three relays advance. And one of those was San Angelo Central, so we were pretty excited about that, especially with them being so young. I did throw in these awards as well, Christopher Banks received the Coach Jim Snake Allen intestinal fortitude, which is basically the Hundred and Ten Percent Award. I just named it after Coach Allen, the longtime track coach at Central. And then Hector Hecton won the Hollands Award, so super proud of these guys. And again, just thanks a lot to the school board, administration, we are very lucky, everybody's already mentioned it, what a great place this is to work. And we do, we have great facilities, a lot of support from our administration and the school board. Downtown, at the administration building, everybody's just awesome, and we appreciate everything that you do for us and our kids, so thanks a lot.
Thank you, Coach. Next up, Coach Tiffany Meek with Lady Cat Track and Field.
Yes, we want to thank everybody for this opportunity to recognize these kids, they work hard all year long, and anytime we get a chance to brag on them, it's always a special night. They're great kids, they had a great season, and I'm very proud of them, I know Coach Meek went over the coaches. You know, what was so special is that these coaches got to specialize in events, and that those kids were able to get the coaching attention that they needed. Nobody's trying to rush off and go somewhere else, so it was very, we were blessed to have the number of coaches that we did. We talked about the mishaps that we've had with the weather, the water, and COVID, and, you know, we've just kind of been without track meets for the past two years. But we had these three meets before District, the girls had a really good season, very competitive, just had fun every track meet. At the District Meet, we placed fourth, we were able to advance twelve kids in eight events, we had one District Champion. At the area meet, we placed third, we advanced eleven kids in six events and had two area champions. And then at the Regional Meet, we were able to get two Regional Finalists. Our first one that qualified all the way through to Regionals is Arden Neff, she's a senior, a 300-meter hurdler. This was really her first full track season, well, not a full one, as much of a track season as we've had in a while. She moved to us as a sophomore, and really hasn't had a track season since then. She was able to get in five 300-meter races this year, and just kept getting stronger and better, and the season just kind of ran out on her. She was first-team All-District, she's our District Champion, an area champion, and then she was seventh place at the Regional Track Meet. Peyton Mayberry, she's a junior, she triple jumped, long jumps, and high jumps. But as far as qualifying past District, she was able to place fourth in the triple jump and long jump. She's an area qualifier in the triple jump and a Regional Qualifier in the triple jump. Kalen Edwards, she's a junior, she's also a jump specialist, what she was able to advance in was the long jump. She placed fourth in District, an area qualifier, and also a Regional Qualifier. Leila Young is another junior, we're really lacking, we get these kids back another year. Leila, this was her second trip to Regionals, out of all the kids we had, she was, she's the one that's made two trips. So, really, most of these kids were just inexperienced, but we had a great time. Leila, she was our District Runner-Up, an area qualifier, and a Regional Qualifier. As a freshman at the Regional Meet, she placed fifteenth, and this year she placed ninth, so she just keeps getting better. And she's also trailing that school record, we really look for her to get that next year. McKenna McMillan, she's a freshman pole vaulter, she's also a three-sport varsity athlete as a freshman. We were really fortunate to have Kenna come out, and as a softball player too, I know it's hard to juggle two sports at the same time, but she did a great job. She was third place at District, and I think, let's see, throughout the year, she never scored below third place. She had a really good season, she's an area qualifier and a Regional Finalist. She was also the top freshman vaulter at Regionals, she's a true competitor, and she left the Regional Meet. I know she's eager to work hard to get back there, it was, she didn't finish like she wanted to, so it's gonna be fun next year. Our relay, our 4x100-meter relay, the four girls that were on this relay, Caroline Steele, a freshman, Maya Moore, a senior, Sarah Scott, a senior, Alyssa Delgado, a sophomore. These girls, they, we, this year, trying to get that stick around, I think we only got it around like these three times and maybe one other meet. We just, the kids stayed strong, we just kept telling them, you know, stay patient, and they did a great job of being focused and determined. What is exciting is we have two younger kids on here that will be returning, we are gonna miss the two seniors. Maya and Sarah, they have been just great leaders for us, and we really appreciate their hard work. This relay, placing fourth at District, and then at area, being able to be runner-up. Like I said, they're very good sprinters, we just had a hard time, we just struggled a little bit, but they were able to stay focused, and I'm very proud of them this season. The 4x200-meter relay, this group, some of the same people, Caroline Steele, a freshman, Naveah Hearn, a freshman, Sarah Scott, a senior, and Madison Ortiz, a sophomore. They had a great year, very competitive, very strong group of girls, they were District Runner-Up, Area Champions, and then a Regional Qualifier. Of these girls, none of them had ever been to the Regional or had ever been to the area track meet before. So this was a, this was a big deal, big eyes, but they got the experience, and we are very proud of them. We're gonna miss Sarah as a senior, but she led the girls well this year, and I know that they're going to be stronger from her leadership this year. We want to thank you guys again for recognizing all these athletes tonight. Like I said, you know, we don't get enough time to really talk about each of these kids and brag on them throughout the year, and so this is a special time. We think the admin and the school board for all you guys do, you guys really make our jobs a lot easier by all your support and the things that you're able to provide for us throughout the year, and we really appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, Coach. Next up, Coach Allenbar, Lakeview Track and Field.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Gomez, for setting this up, and thank you, thank you, school board, for all of your support. We really do appreciate everything that you've done for us, we were able to have a very competitive track season this year, and it was a lot of fun, and there's a lot of moments to be proud of for this year's team. I'd also like to thank our superintendent, Carl Detloff. Our athletic director, Mr. Rodney Chan, our assistant athletic director, Mark Baker. Our campus athletic coordinator, Hector Guevara, our assistant athletic coordinator, Tracy Dogg. our assistant athletic coordinator, coordinator Tracy Dawson, and our principal, Zachary Ramirez. And of course, uh, not to leave out our Booster Club, who was, uh, able to, uh, uh, donate many things for us that, that we were able to use. Our coaches, uh, Coach Kitner coaches the boys and girls, long jump and triple jump. Uh, Coach Allenbar, high jump and boys relays, Coach Rachel Brewster, uh, shot put and discus, Aaron Leaper, distance, Jonathan Gonzalez hurdles, Miguel Hernandez pole vault and boys relays, Josue Reyes shot put and discus. And then our trainers, Troy Wilde, Kelsey Venderberg and Madison Salas. And then our manager, Alize Gonzalez. Uh, this team picture here is most of our boys varsity track. There's, there's a few that aren't pictured here, but this was taken right after the district track meet. You can see them, uh, with their medals. And on the next slide, we'll talk about the area qualifiers. From left to right, we have Gio Pablo, who qualified in the four by two hundred relay. Paulo Madero qualified in the one ten hurdles. Austin Bandy qualified in the four by two, the three hundred hurdles and the four by four. Derek Taylor qualified in the high jump, the four by two, the two hundred and the four by four. Brandon Cruz qualified in the long jump, four by two, three hundred hurdles and four by four. Brandon Duriel in the four by four. Jaden Fuentes in the thirty two hundred meter run. Not pictured is Jaden Marmella, who had, who qualified in the shot put. And then our alternate Bryce Medley. Our regional qualifiers now, we have pictured there on the left, uh, Gio Pablo, Derek Taylor, Austin Bandy and Brendan Cruz. Their best time, uh, was one twenty nine point six, uh, which, uh, got them fourth place at regionals this year. Also, our regional qualifier, Brandon Cruz in the three hundred hurdles. His best time at regionals was the thirty nine point nine six, which was his PR, uh, with a fifth place at regionals. And finally, our four by four relay with Austin Bandy, Brandon Duriel, Derek Taylor and Brandon Cruz. Their best time that they ran at regionals was a three twenty seven thirty two with the fifth place finish. Once again, just, uh, thank you to everybody, uh, for your support, school board, administrators, teachers, staff, community. Uh, it was an exciting year and we are looking forward, uh, to another exciting year next year.
Thank you, Coach. Coach Kitner?
Hi, um, I'm Coach Kitner. I am the, um, head coach of the girls', uh, track and field program. Um, start off, I wanted to introduce our assistant coaches. Um, Coach Leaper is the distance coach. Coach Brewster throws, uh, Coach Gonzalez hurdles. Uh, Coach Hernandez pole vault and Coach Reyes is our, uh, throws coach. We, um, are very fortunate to be able to share, um, the coaches that are able to support the kids and be there late nights. Um, I know some of the coaches were there past six o'clock some nights. Um, so it was really special to see that they put it all in for the kids. Um, and I know the kids really appreciated that too. Um, I did want to give a shout out to my JV girls. Um, this is the future of my program. Um, even though there's a small group, they, um, run with heart. They run with, um, pride for the Lakeview team. Um, so I'm really excited to see them, a lot of them are, uh, freshmen. So, um, the, the future for them is, is pretty exciting. And then there's my varsity girls. Um, I actually do have a very young team in total, I'm only losing four kiddos. Um, so I'm really excited about, um, seeing all, most of these girls next year. So we're pretty excited for that. Um, so what we've accomplished so far this season, um, I had one district champion, seven area qualifiers and one regional qualifier. We had area qualifiers in the thirty two hundred, the sixteen hundred, the eight hundred, the four hundred, the four by two relay, the four by one relay, uh, long jump and pole vault. And I also had a regional qualifier in the eight hundred and four hundred. So, um, there's all the girls except for one, um, that actually qualified to area. That was after our district meet. Um, so I'm just missing actually my senior, the, the pole vaulter in that picture. Um, the girls that qualified to area, Michaela Wall, she's my only senior that qualified. She got second place in pole vault district and qualified at area, so I'm sad to see her go. Um, she actually came back to track this year after being out of it for two years. So to be able to come back, um, and compete and go to area, I was just, I was so proud of her. Um, and like I said, she's our only senior that, uh, we're losing with that. Um, my next one is Anastasia Brer, she's a freshman. She received third place in thirty two hundred and third place as well in the mile. Um, and she is an area qualifier as well. Um, after her race, uh, I think it was the mile, uh, area, she just sat there and started crying. And, and I said, what's wrong? And she said, I'm just so disappointed I didn't, you know, perform as well as I should have and everything. And I said, you're a freshman, this is your first year. We, you know, we didn't even have as many meets as we needed. Um, but the, the heart and the fight that she has is, is pretty exciting to see. And I still have three more years with her. Um, my next one is Dante Mitchell, she's a junior. Um, she was part of the two relays, um, that advanced, the, the four by one and the four by two. Um, they both got out, um, into area. And the funny story about this one is about thirty minutes before the sprint relay ran, I actually pulled the original, one of the original members of this relay team and, uh, put another kid on here. So for this relay team to be able to advance and move on with a switch like that, um, just shows how hard these girls work and their determination to actually make it to area and represent the, the maidens. Um, Amari Calhoun is actually the one I put in the relay, um, thirty minutes before they ran at district. Um, she is a junior, um, and so she was part of that relay team, the sprint relay and the eight hundred meter relay that, uh, qualified to area. Um, Haley Perez, um, again, she's part of the, the two relays. Um, and as you can see, I have, uh, pretty excited for the future for these girls because I have two juniors and two sophomores. Um, so these girls are gonna be coming back next year. And now they've got a taste of, um, area because obviously last year they weren't able to have a track season. So they are pretty excited that now they know what it takes and what, what they're gonna have to do to move on. So she was my third leg of that, those relays. And then my final leg is Sophie Goldil, she's a sophomore. She was part of those two relays as well. Um, and actually, I, um, I didn't find out, this kid runs with a lot of heart. I didn't, I didn't find out until, um, after area that she actually was running on a fractured foot. Um, so for them to do as well as they did, having somebody who was hurt and never once complained, never once said anything, that just shows the heart that these girls have and, and the pride that they have that they want to run for their school and represent their school well. So that was pretty, pretty crazy, but I was proud of all of those girls. Um, the next one, uh, Mackenzie Corey, she was my alternate, she's a freshman alternate for the relay. She obviously didn't get to compete, but just having her out there and practicing with the girls and everything like that, it just gave her a taste of, you know, what she's gotta do to get there and to be part of that relay and to move on. So, uh, having freshmen that are able to do that is pretty exciting. Um, the, my last one, Faith Miller, she's a sophomore. Uh, she was the district champion in the four hundred meters. She was fourth place in the eight hundred and, uh, fourth place at long jump at district. And then moving on to area for Faith, she was third place in the eight hundred, fourth place in the four hundred. I actually ended up pulling her out of long jump just because I wanted her to focus on these two races. Um, so she qualified to area for three events, only ended up running in two, but ended up, um, qualifying to run at regionals in those two events. So, um, when she went to regionals, um, let me go to the next slide, please. Um, she ended up eleventh place in the, the four hundred, she ran a sixty two and sixth place in the, the, um, eight hundred, she ran a two twenty four, which is, was her PR by, I think, four seconds. Um, and so this kid, she's only a sophomore, she's also a soccer player. Um, that was going on at the exact same time. So for her to be able to go through, um, both sports and be successful in both just shows what kind of athletes we have at Lakeview. Um, so I'm really excited to see her for another two years as well. Um, and I did have three all academic kiddos, they had to have a ninety average, uh, throughout track season. That was Faith Miller, Misha Watts and Brooke Skeltin. Um, my hundred and ten percent award went to Misha Watts. Misha, um, is a JV kid, but has gone through a lot of health issues and is, is ready to run, always gives her best. Um, so we just thought that she deserved that award. Um, the maidens award went to my freshman Anastasia Brer. Um, she ran every race that I put her in and did never question, um, what I wanted her to do. So that's definitely what we look for in our kids. And then the Holland's award, the, the top award obviously went, uh, went to Faith Miller. She, um, she's just a rock star, she's a great athlete, um, and we just really enjoy having her on the team. And then thank you to everyone, um, just to reiterate what all the other coaches said. Thank you to the board members, um, Dr. Gomez, Dr. Detloff, um, Chant, Coach Chant, Coach Baker, Coach Guevara, Coach Dawson, um, our principal, uh, Mr. Ramirez, our athletic trainers. Everybody that's part of this, the parents, just thank you so much for allowing us, um, to do what we do with your kids and trusting us and, um, just being able to do what we love. So thank you.
Thank you, Coach Kinner. Coach Henry for Lady Cat Soccer.
All right, can y'all hear me?
Yes, sir.
Excellent, I'm ready when you are.
We're ready.
Okay, uh, yeah, like everybody else says, thanks to everybody up at admin and, and to all the board members. We really appreciate all the support and of course, central faculty and staff as well. Um, best school in the state, hands down, so we appreciate everything you do. Uh, let me go ahead and move on, I'm ready to roll. This is, uh, twenty twenty one accomplishments at this point, fourteen wins, six losses, three ties. They were the district two six A runner up, uh, we were by district champions. Uh, lost in the area round on a, on a goal, I'm not gonna talk about because I'll probably get a little fired up, but we'll, we'll bypass that a little bit. Um, this, there was our fourteenth straight year to, to get into the playoffs and we have eight district two six A honors as well. Um, assistant coach, uh, Coach Cynthia Andrews, this is her fourth year with me and we had another undefeated season, uh, on the JV side. So a lot of potential there and, and looking forward to those girls coming up and playing hard. My lovely seniors, who we'll get to individually. Uh, Laney Delgado is a three year varsity letterman. Crystal Gonzalez was a Tascow Academic All-State recipient this year. Michaela Jordan, uh, she was district two six A, had honorable mention, and she's also a Tascow Academic All-State. Kaylee, who is a three year varsity letterman, and she was also a Tascow Academic All-State this year. And Sally Holgame was a little unfortunate, she was injured, um, didn't get to play this season, but a fantastic young lady and player, she was a two year varsity letterman. And Angel Alvarado, she was a team captain, four year varsity letterman, and she was first team all district this year. Karen Moffett was also a team captain, she was a four year varsity letterman. She received the district two six A defensive MVP this year, uh, Tascow Academic All-State. And one thing not mentioned on there, she was the Holland's award recipient this season as well. Got a huge bunch of junior girls, uh, coming back, looking, uh, very much forward to it. Uh, Eddie Harkle Road is two year varsity letterman, she was second team all district this year. Kenzie Griffith, uh, first year varsity letterman. Sophia Mater Safat, she's a three year varsity letterman, and she was first team all district for the second straight season in a row. Jules Mesa is a three year varsity letterman. Caitlin Freeman's first year varsity letterman. Claudia Mares is a first year varsity letterman, cute little dog too. Abby Colmbach was a two year, she's a two year varsity letterman, had a great season this year, second team all district. Camille Holly, one year varsity letterman. Ellie Barker is a two year varsity letterman. And we're still in the juniors, Clarissa Rueda, first year varsity letterman. Bree Garcia, uh, first year on the varsity side as well. Vana Barajas, the first year on varsity, had a great year, uh, district two six A honorable mention. Riley Herbert, uh, two years on varsity, she was a first team all district selection this year. Get to my sophomores, uh, Sydney Herbert's a goalkeeper, she's a two year varsity letterman. Aubrey Gonzalez, also unfortunate, we lost her a little bit halfway through the season this year as well, but she's a two year varsity letterman. Uh, Lexi Templin, two year varsity letterman. Marsha Adalana, we, we brought her up, um, when Karen was, was injured in that regard, did a fantastic job. She spent the last part on, on varsity. Uh, Ava Barra is her first year on varsity as well. And I believe last but not least, uh, Alyssa Villarreal, uh, was her first year on varsity as well as a freshman too. Guys, truly appreciate everything that y'all do. Um, and that people have given enough shout outs all over the place as well. I can't thank y'all enough and all the support, um, fantastic school district, fantastic school. Thank you, Farah, I appreciate it, I'll see y'all later.
Thanks, Coach Henry. Next up, Coach Vu, and Coach Vu, I'm sorry we're not in alpha order, sorry for the hidden slides, but you are next.
All right, thank you all again for letting us be a part of this tonight. Um, there's just my varsity team right there, our overall record this year was nine, eight and five. Uh, district wise, we finished five, three and four, uh, was third place in district. As far as our season, we made it to the playoffs, uh, played a tough El Paso, Montwood team in the playoffs and ended up tied after regulation and played two more overtime periods. And unfortunately, they scored with five minutes left in the second overtime to beat us. But it was a great season and I'm proud of all the guys. And just like I have this picture, I'll just go through and, uh, introduce the players that we see in this picture. In the bottom row, we have Dalen Valdez, he's a sophomore, oh, sorry. Uh, we have Dom Downing, he's a sophomore as well, or junior. Sean Snyder, sophomore, Ashton Tapia is a freshman, we pulled up from the JV. We have Mario Lopez, who's a senior. Oscar Fuentes, who's a junior. Tristan Hill is one of our seniors. David Marizaldi, junior. Deegan Alvarez, junior. Uh, Nathan Robles, the senior. Tristan Tapia is a junior. Johnny Reyes, senior. In the back row, we have Dylan Marburger, a junior. Eric Rodriguez, also a junior. Miles Harvey, senior. Sebastian Espinoza is a junior. Alejandro Salinas is a senior. Morgan McDonald, senior. Uh, in the middle, we have our goalkeepers, Jacob Little is a junior. We have Natali Munoz, senior. Uh, Caleb Cattano is a JV player, we moved up, who is a sophomore. We have senior Dylan Cottle. Junior Brennan Villa Gomez. Senior Riley Wallace. Junior Christian Vaughn. And senior Jordan Garcia. Okay, there's just our coaching staff, there's myself, I've been head coach here for fifteen years and I've been fortunate to, uh, be here that long. And it's just a blessing to be back to the school that I went to high school with, um, as an alumni. So I'm just, um, blessed to be here each and every, every single year that we're able to do this. Now, there's my assistant Chase Martin, this is his second year with me. Uh, we'll move on to our district two six A selections and I'm just glad we're back in district, uh, two six A with all the West Texas teams. We had a little hiatus in other districts the last four years, but I'm definitely glad to be back, uh, playing our West Texas rivals. Okay, we had two players who were district two six A honorable mentions. It was senior Riley Wallace and junior Jacob Little. We had three second team selections, senior Morgan McDonald, senior Natali Munoz and junior Christian Vaughn. Uh, we had three guys on the first team, senior Miles Harvey, senior Tristan Hill and junior David Marizaldi. And we had a player who was named the district midfielder of the year, which was senior Dylan Cottle. And we had a player who was named the District Midfielder of the Year, which was Senior Dylan Cottle. Uh, for Tascow Academic All-State, you had to have a ninety overall GPA, uh, throughout your four years of high school, and we had six seniors qualify for that. Uh, Senior Dylan Cottle, uh, Miles Harvey, Tristan Hill. Nathan Robles, Johnny Reyes, and Riley Wallace. Okay, and out of those seniors, we had five of them that also qualified for the Texas High School Coach Association Academic All-State teams as well, and this. Had a little bit higher, um, criteria. So you had to have a ninety-two overall GPA, and they also ranked you. Based on your class rank and your ACT and SAT scores. Uh, Miles Harvey made it to the first team. Uh, Dylan Cottle and Riley Wallace were second-team selections. And then Tristan Hill and Nathan Robles were honorable mention selections for that. Here's our Holland's Award winner, Miles Harvey. And again, just with that award, it's voted upon by the teammates. This award's given to the athlete that exhibits exemplary teamwork, athletic ability, and overall conscientiousness. While making a significant contribution to the team. And just another note about Miles, I'm, I'm proud of the fact he's number five in his graduating class. And is planning on going to school in California at Cal Poly. And last, we have three of our student athletes who are going to play soccer in college, and it's just always neat to see kids get the opportunity to play at the next level. So with that, we have Senior Dylan Cottle, who's attending McMurray University. Senior Tristan Hill, who's going to UTE PB in Odessa. And then last, we have Mario Lopez, who's going to Oklahoma Wesley and to continue his education and playing career. So again, we thank y'all for the opportunity to present tonight and, um, looking forward to next year and what our underclassmen can do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Coach Vu. Coach Jones.
All right, thank you, Dr. Gomez, I appreciate it. Thank you, school board. Uh, we appreciate y'all's support through, through this long school year and, and season. Uh, it doesn't go unnoticed, we really appreciate it. Um, uh, we'll go ahead and get rolling here. Uh, so for our roster here, we have, uh, you can go to the next slide. Yeah, we have, um. Senior Angel Chacon, who is nominated for our United Soccer Coaches Academic All-American. Uh, sophomore Jose Castro, freshman Xavier Munoz, junior Dylan Solis. Senior Isaiah Sanchez, sophomore Tyler Dunn, who is nominated for United Soccer Coaches, uh, All-State Team. Sophomore Ricky Ramirez. Sophomore JV N two, freshman Sterling Gray, senior Adrian Flores. Senior Jose Reyes, senior Luis Negrete. Sophomore Christian Gatlin, freshman Rodrigo Martinez, senior Alexis Ponce, junior Joe Munoz. Sophomore Aiden Lopez, junior Joshua Torres, senior Abel Mora, sophomore Julian Munoz. Freshman Hagan Gossett, freshman Manuel Telez. Sophomore Joe Angel Contreras, and senior Chris Ramos, and of course, our manager, junior Andy Martinez. Uh, appreciate Coach Hammick. Coach Hammick is his first year, uh, with me. Uh, he's done a great job. This is my fourth year at Lakeview. Uh, loved every minute of it and, uh, wouldn't be where I'm at without great assistant coaches and, and this year, that, that's Coach Hammick. Uh, our record this year overall, twelve and twelve. We finished district four and three, uh, which was good enough for second place. Uh, we had another great year this year, um. Double-digit wins, two years in a row now, uh, even though we lost three of our district games due to the ice and water issues. Uh, proud of these guys, they worked hard and it was a great season. Uh, our District Three Four A awards, Tyler Dunn, sophomore, was a defensive MVP. Joshua Torres was our goalkeeper of the year. Isaiah Sanchez was first-team forward. JV N two, first-team midfield. Ricky Ramirez was first-team defender. Luis Negrete was second-team forward. Aiden Lopez was second-team midfield. Rodrigo Martinez was second-team defender. And then our honorable mentions were Hagan Gossett, Joe Munoz, Sterling Gray, and Adrian Flores. Uh, appreciate you guys. Thank you, Dr. Detloff, uh, school board, Coach Chan, Coach Baker, um, Mr. Ramirez, Coach Guevara, we appreciate it. Uh, we thanks, thank you for the past four years, wouldn't have been as successful. Uh, we wouldn't be where we are without you guys cheering us on and always supporting us, and, and we thank you for it, and we look forward to another season next year.
Thank you, Coach. Coach Gonzalez.
Can you hear me, Dr. Gomez?
Yes, sir.
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, first of all, like, like, uh, we've been thanking our, our board. Uh, thank you very much for everything you do for our community, especially on the north side. Uh, Dr. Dendel, I mean, Mr. Dendel, thank you very much for, uh, attending our, uh, award ceremony of the night. Uh, thank you very much for all the support you've given us. Dr. Deflof, uh, thank you very much for the support you've given our program. Um, it was nice to meet your uncle and Burke Burnett. You never know who you're going to meet when you're out and about, and I'm. I'm just honored to know that our, our girls in our best behavior, and when, when you meet somebody and it's a, hey, uh, my nephew. Is, uh, Dr. Deflof. It was nice to meet him. Anyway, uh, Coach Chan, uh, thank you very much, you and Baker. Jessica and Julie, uh, without y'all's assistance, uh, this season wouldn't be possible, but thank you very much for everything you've done. At our, uh, at our campus, uh, Mr. Zach Ramirez, and all the other principals. And I think something that we haven't acknowledged, uh. On tonight is the teachers at our campus, at Central Campus. Uh, that's what, uh, makes this possible, is we work as, as a team. And without our teachers, without the faculty, without the Lakeview family. Uh, the, the people who feed our, our students and, and care for our, our, our students. It, it takes a tribe. And I want to thank them personally for allowing us to continue what, uh, to do what we do on the field. Um, you cannot be successful unless you have a team that works as, you know, teamwork. And I have that with my assistant, uh, coach, uh, Rochelle Rocky Flores. Uh, she's been, um, the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty Tascow Ass- uh, Assistant Coach of the Year. And she's made this, uh, last, uh, couple of years amazing for, for our campus, but also for our team. Um, I want to thank, um, Mr. Guevara, uh, Coach Guevara and Coach Dawson. And, uh, just the coaches that have supported me and the maidens this year. Uh, and speaking of, I want to go ahead and, uh, use this picture here to, to introduce our, our girls. Uh, three girls that are not pictured here, I want to go ahead and recognize them. Uh, our train, our, uh, manager is, um, Emma Guevara, could I be there for the picture? Uh, number one, Giselle Martinez, and number sixteen, Liz Monta. Um, but if we start over here on the left, uh, you can see our, our managers that assisted us. Uh, we have, uh, Elijah Vega, and then we have Elena Banderas. Uh, number thirteen, we have a sophomore, um, Hannah Alexander. Uh, next we have Amore Collins, is our junior. Uh, Victor, um, Victoria Hendrikis is our sophomore, uh, number twelve. Um, next we have Eliana Soria, number, uh, I'm sorry, she's a freshman. Then we have, uh, Isabel Yanes, she'll be a senior, she'll be leaving, leaving us. Next, we have Jasmine Flores, a sophomore. Then we have, uh, our, um, uh, sophomore, Brianna Mieda. Uh, she's also, uh, a sophomore, I'm sorry. Next, we have, um, Marisol Felipe, who is our junior. Number seven, we have, um, Natalie San Agustin. Um, another senior, we have Ali Lopez. Our goalkeeper is, um. Excuse me, Jennifer Mata. Right next to her, we have our freshman, um, Alyssa De La Cruz. Next, we have, uh, Janessa Rocha, who is a sophomore. Next to her, we have, uh, Lexi Rangel. Uh, sophomore. We have another sophomore, Angelina Ramirez. And then we have, uh, next to her, we have sophomore Ali Flores. Behind her, we have, uh, Ariana Gonzalez, uh, senior. Next to her, we have, um, Isabel Cabrera. She is a sophomore. Next to her, we have Faith Miller, who is also a sophomore. Senior Brenda Alvarez. Behind her, we have Chesney Trevino, another senior. Then we have Cynthia Castro, our other senior. Uh, unfortunately, we had an injury this year, uh, if you, Juarez, who's a sophomore, will join us, uh, next year. And last but not least, we have Lizzie Cortez, one of our managers. Um, this team would not have been successful if, uh, we could not rely on our trainers. I want to personally thank, uh, Kelsey Vandenberg and Troy Willde. As you can see, um, we had a seven-seven-one record, and for our district, we went, um, five and one. Uh, third year being district champions, and then you see the next slide. You'll see that we were also the bi-district champions and area qualifiers. Uh, we were able to have a successful season working as a team. We'll go to the next slide. I want to recognize our, uh, all-district awards. Um, all-district offensive, uh, most valuable player, we had Jasmine, uh, Flores, who is a sophomore. We have first teamers, uh, number twenty-one was sophomore Lexi Rangel. Number three, Ali Flores, who's also a sophomore, and, uh, Faith Miller, number twenty, another sophomore. And our freshman goalkeeper, uh, Jennifer Mata. Second-team all-district, uh, we had our newcomer, uh, number twenty-three, Janessa Rocha. Uh, again, we had our, uh, sophomore Victoria Hendrikis, and our defensive player Isabel Cabrera. Uh, we had honorable mentions, freshman Alyssa De La Cruz, uh, freshman Eliana Soria. Junior Amore, Amore Collins, and junior Marisol Felipe. And to finish it off, we had, uh, sophomore, uh, Hannah Alexander, senior Cynthia Castro. Senior, um, I'm, I'm sorry, that was Chesney Trevino. And senior Cynthia Castro, and also, uh, senior Giselle Martinez. Um, um, we did have locally at our, uh, uh, Lakeview High School, we made some, uh. Some decisions on our awards. Uh, it was a great opportunity to welcome these new players to our, our team this year. And, and I want to, uh, congratulate, uh, Janessa Rocha and Alyssa De La Cruz for the one hundred and ten percent award. Also, uh, for our maiden soccer offensive MVP, we have Jasmine Flores and also. Uh, Faith Miller, who's not pictured, but I'll show you something in a second. And, um, our next defensive player, uh, for this year was Jennifer Mata, who did an outstanding job. At, in the goalie. And our Holland's Award, uh, was presented to, uh, Chesney Trevino, who has been a four-year, uh, player. With the Maiden Barca program. And also, uh, you heard, um, Coach Kinnner speak of, uh, Faith Miller. Who, who has brought, um, not only with her leadership, these are our two captains each year. Uh, but the leadership that, uh, that they brought into our, uh, to our program. Um, I cannot say how, uh, successful we could not have been without the families and the support. From, uh, the girls, uh, working together, but, but from the families and the communities for supporting us. Uh, Coach Flores and I would like to say thank you to everyone and, and within our community. And, uh, we're looking forward to an excellent season next year. We have a young team and we're excited about, uh, the coming years. Thank you very much, Dr. Gomez.
Thank you so much. And wrapping up the virtual recognitions, Coach McLaughlin for Central Swimming.
Hi, uh, thank you, Mr. Lehman, uh, SAISD board members, Dr. Detloff, Coach Chan, for, uh, hosting us this evening. I'd like to start off to talk a little bit about a brief, uh, summary of just our overall program. Um, this year was definitely a, a whirlwind, um. And, uh, started off, we had our schedule set up, UIL said, uh, you know, we could have eight teams per meet. And then I, we had our schedules, uh, set. And we started the school year and they said, all right, no longer eight teams per meet, but, uh, three teams per meet. So we had to scramble, scratch our schedule and scramble to, uh, set up meets. Uh, we ended up hosting three meets this year, uh, which is a lot different than our normal one. Um, I'd like to thank, uh, Mr. Waters and Coach Chan for, uh, for working with us and allowing us to, uh. Host spectators. Um, we, uh, we had lots of compliments from our, uh, opposing teams. That, you know, they really liked the way we set it up, and we're, uh, very thankful that we were allowing spectators, uh, at the duel, uh, at our duel meets. Because, uh, throughout the year, throughout wherever we traveled, there was, uh, very limited, if any spectators. Um, uh, wherever we went, so they were very, uh, our parents were very appreciative of, of that. Um, we're going to start off with girls. Sorry, one back. Um, our, our girls' team honor, uh, we won the, uh, Community Homecoming, uh, Pep Rally Spirit Award. Um, uh, that's a both boys and girls' team award, they share that. Our girls, uh, uh, we were only allowed to do duel meets this year. Uh, they finished with an eight and four, uh, duel meet record. And were undefeated, uh, in district duel meets. And then, uh, we finished out the year, uh, as a district runner-up, uh, missing out, uh, on the championship. Uh, uh, by twenty-seven points to, uh, the Midland High Bulldogs. Um, we hope to get them back next year. Um, we had two school records this year, um, both set by Whitney Edinburgh. Um, two-hundred IM, she set that record, uh, at our, at, at, at home in October, uh, two seventeen seventy-seven. And then, uh, Hunter Butterfly, she set that at prelims, at regionals, uh, fifty-eight thirty-three, uh, both amazing swims. And, uh, we'll just, uh, you know, great swims, and we hope to see if she can break them next, uh, break her own records next year. Uh, our, uh, honorable mentions are our, our first-team, uh, all-region and first, uh, first-team all-district. First swimming. Um, you, to finish, uh, first team is, uh, you have to place, uh, first through third. To finish second team, fourth through sixth, and then honorable mention, uh, seventh and eighth. So our, uh, second-team all-region, uh, Camila Acevedo, Clara Cotton, Whitney Edinburgh. Cassidy Mora, Emma Morales, and Emma Watkins. And then honorable mention all-region, Caitlin Migrants. Our, um, first-team all-district, Camila Acevedo. Uh, Paula Brain, Clara Cotton, Jillian Dobbs, Whitney Edinburgh, Holly Harrington. Cassidy Mora, Emma Morales, Caitlin Migrants, Emma Watkins, our second-team all-district. Sophia Blastic, Salma Hernandez, Esperanza Sarabia. And then honorable mention all-district, Marissa Lopez, Naveya Pedraza, Alina Robleski, and Haley Robleski. Our, our kids really work hard, extremely hard in the classroom. Um, our twenty-twenty-one academic honors are, uh, for juniors and seniors. Uh, to be Texas Academic All-State and, uh, Academic All-American. Um, you have to hold a twenty, uh, ninety-seven, uh, ninety-three point seven-five, uh, average. Uh, you can be an Academic All-State your junior and senior year, uh, but you can only be Academic All-American your senior year. So Academic All-Americans, our two, uh, senior girls, Cassidy Mora and Emma Morales. Our Academic All-States, again, the seniors, Cassidy Moore and Emma Morales, and then our junior girls, Holly Harrington and Alyssa Van Zant. And then Emma was also in the National Honor Society. All right, uh, we are, we're gonna, uh, honor eight girls today. Um, so let's start with. Camila Acevedo, she's our, uh, our girls' team was made up of nine freshmen this year. Uh, they made up almost, uh, half of our team. Uh, we really relied on them and they stepped up big, um, uh. Throughout the year and really came through it, came through strong, uh, at districts and regionals. Uh, Camila was first-team all-district, second-team all-region. She placed, um. Fourth in the two-hundred IM at district, um, with a time of two twenty-eight ninety-one, which is good enough for eighth all-time. Uh, at Central. Um, she qualified for regionals in that event. Uh, but decided to focus more on, uh, the medley relay and breaststroke at regionals, which allowed one of our other swimmers to, uh. Take her place at regionals. Uh, she also swam in the hundred breaststroke, finishing second there, and was a regional consolation finalist, finishing ninth. Uh, with a time of one-ten ninety-nine. That time is also good for sixth all-time, uh, at Central. And then she was a part of our two-hundred medley relay that placed second at district and was a regional finalist. Um, and her breaststroke leg was thirty-one-six. Throughout the year, she also competed in the two-hundred freestyle and four-hundred freestyle relays. Clara Cotton, another freshman, uh, really came through big for us. Uh, she was first-team all-district, second-team all-region. Uh, she placed second in the fifty freestyle. She placed second in the fifty freestyle and was a regional consolation finalist, finishing thirteenth at regionals with a time of twenty-six point two. She finished sixth in district at the hundred, in the hundred freestyle with a time of fifty-nine eight. In a normal year, the top six go to regionals. This year, due to COVID, they only took the top four. So she would have qualified for regionals in that event if it were a non-COVID year. But she wasn't able to go to regionals in that event this year. She was a big part on our relay, swimming on the two hundred freestyle relay that finished second at district and sixth at regionals. And then she was also on our four hundred freestyle relay that placed second at district and eighth at, at regionals. Throughout the year, she also competed in the two hundred medley relays. Whitney Edinburgh had a, a great sophomore year. She really stepped up big. She just missed a school record her freshman year and then, but she was able to come back and, and actually break it her sophomore year. She was first team all district, second team all region. Two hundred IM set the school record in October. Hundred Butterfly, just placed second at district and was a regional finalist with a time of fifty-eight thirty-three. That was the school record. Hundred backstroke, district champion and regional finalist, finishing fourth with a time of minute flat point two-two. She was also a big part of our relays this year. Two hundred medley relay, finishing second at district, sixth at regionals. And then two hundred freestyle relay, finishing second at district and sixth at regionals also. She holds three school records. She's part of the two hundred medley relay record that was set last year. She has the two hundred IM record and the one hundred butterfly record. Holly Harrington is a junior. She was first team all district. She, she had a great year, really came, we changed, we changed a little focus for her. She was more of a butterfly freshman and sophomore year. But she changed her focus a little bit and focused a little more on distance this year and it, and it helped the team and it, and it worked out in her favor. She placed third at district and, and then was a regional consolation finalist, finishing sixteenth with a time of two eleven. She was also swam the five hundred freestyle, finishing third at district and regional consolation finalist, finishing sixteenth, breaking six minutes going five fifty-nine. She also competed in the hundred butterfly throughout the year, two hundred medley and two hundred medley and two hundred freestyle relays and the four hundred freestyle relays. She is, was a Texas Academic All-State team member. Cassidy Mora, one of our two seniors, really had an amazing senior year. When we got sent home last March and we were able to come back in the beginning of June to have practice. Cassidy was one of those swimmers that was first in line, ready to come back to practice. Had an amazing senior year. She finished first team all district, second team all region in the fifty freestyle. She was district champion and regional consolation finalist, finishing twelfth at regionals. One hundred freestyle, finishing in fifth place. Again, she would have qualified for regionals in a non-COVID year. She was a big part of our relays and finished, anchored our two hundred freestyle relay and our two hundred medley relay, finishing second place in the, at district and regional finalist and six, finishing sixth in the medley. And then the same thing for the two hundred freestyle relay. She works hard, worked hard every single day and was a great team leader. She holds a part of, she holds one school record. She was on the two hundred freestyle relay last year that set the record. And she is twenty-twenty-one Academic All-American and Texas Academic All-State. Emma Morales, one of our other, one of our two, our second senior. She was first team all district, second team all region. Her and Cassidy both, she was right at the same, same page as Cassidy, wanted to have a great senior year. She worked extremely hard all year and was determined to, you know, finish strong. She had amazing swims all year. She finished fifth in the one hundred backstroke at district with time, a best lifetime best of one oh three fifty-six, which would have qualified for regionals in a normal year. Kind of a surprise. In the hundred freestyle, she finished fourth, which qualified for regionals. And she finished sixteenth with a time of fifty-seven seventy-three at regionals. She was our backstroker on the medley relay. Finishing second at district and regional finalist, finishing sixth there. And she was part of our, our anchor on our four hundred freestyle relay that finished second at district and eighth at regionals. She was our twenty-twenty-one Holland's Award recipient. And she is Academic All-American and Academic All-State. Caitlin Migrants, junior, gonna be a senior next year. She was first team all district and then honorable mention all region. She finished the year in fifth place, sorry, two hundred IM, finished fifth district in the two hundred IM with a time of two thirty-three forty-seven. Was able to qualify for regionals in that event after Camila stepped down. And then she dropped two more seconds from there, but had a mistake and was DQ'd. But amazing swim, she's a dual-sport athlete. She cheers and, you know, I think I leave the pool late, you know, seven o'clock at night, six-thirty at night. And I, I drive by and the cheer team is still working on drills and, you know, their routines. So she does a great job, time management with that and all her classwork and swimming. Hundred backstroke, she placed seventh with a time of one oh nine nineteen. And then the four hundred freestyle relay, she placed second or was on that team that placed second at district and was a regional finalist, finishing eighth. She also competed on the medley relays and two hundred freestyle relays throughout the year. Emma Watkins, another freshman on our team that really stepped up and contributed a lot. She was first team all district, second team all region, two hundred IM, third place at district and regional consolation finalist with a time of two twenty-four seventy-two, which is good enough for third all-time at Central. Hundred Butterfly, she placed sixth with a time of one oh five eleven. That would have qualified for regionals in a normal year, but was not able to make its regionals in that event this year. She's a big part of our relays, swimming on two relays. She was on the two hundred freestyle relay that placed second at district and sixth at regionals. She was also on the four hundred freestyle relay that placed second at district and finished eighth at regionals. Throughout the year, she competed in the two hundred freestyle relays and two hundred medley relays. On the boys' side. Again, we shared the award or it's a one-team award. We won the homecoming spirit award, which was a great thing for the community. I know the kids really were bummed out that they didn't get to do the homecoming parade. So this was a good substitute for that and we really enjoyed it. The boys finished ten-two in a dual meet record, only losing to Keller and Lubakai. And the, they were undefeated in their district dual meets. They were district two-six-eight champions for the eleventh time in a row and the fifteenth out of the last seventeenth year. We had some honorable mention all state. Our boys' two hundred freestyle relay finished with the twenty-second fastest time this year. Those swimmers were Cody Fentress, William Foster, Samuel Helm and Ethan Welch. Our all-region and all, all-district teams. First team, again, just as a reminder, to be first team, it's, you finish one, first through third. Second team, fourth through sixth, and then honorable mention, seven and eight. Our first team all region, Caleb Bush, Cody Fentress, William Foster, Samuel Helm, Ethan Welch. And then honorable, honorable mention all region, Braden Brewer, Caleb Peacock, Ryder Shelton and then Louis Trevino Tobas. Our first team all district, Braden Brewer, Caleb Bush, Earl Childs, Cody Fentress, Will Foster, Samuel Helm, Caleb Peacock, Ryder Shelton, Creed Thompson, Louis Trevino Tobas and Ethan Welch. And then second team all district, Austin Ashley, Cameron Bray, Aiden Morales, Chris Carino, Tristan Thompson and Jacob Watkins. Our academic honors this year. Our twenty-twenty-one Academic All-Americans, Caleb Bush. And then our twenty-twenty-one Academic All-State, senior Caleb Bush, juniors Braden Brewer, Cody Fentress, Sam Helm, Caleb Peacock and Ryder Shelton. And then on to the individual accomplishments. Braden Brewer, junior, this year, gonna be senior next year, had a great season. Fought through some illness throughout the year, but came, came out strong and finished the season with a lifetime best. Really proud of him for that. He was first team all district and honorable mention all region in the fifty freestyle. He finished fourth at district and was a consolation finalist at regionals, finishing fifteenth. In the hundred freestyle, he placed fourth and a fourth place qualifying for regionals. And he was, finished fifteenth at regionals with a time of fifty-two oh. He led off our four hundred freestyle relay, which was district champion and regional finalist with a lifetime best time of fifty-one thirty-nine. He also a big part of our relays throughout the year, competing on the two hundred medley relays and two hundred freestyle relays. And he was twenty, Academic All-State this year. Caleb Bush, one of our seniors, had a great season. First team all district, first team all region. In the one hundred breaststroke, he was back-to-back district champion with a, finishing with a time of one double oh point one five and then he was sixth place at regionals. In the two hundred IM, he finished with, in sixth place with a time of two eleven fifty-six, which again would be good enough to qualify for regionals in a non-COVID year. But he wasn't able to compete in that at regionals this year. He's been a big part of our medley relay for the past couple of years, swimming the breaststroke leg. They were district champion and regional final, regional finalist, finishing third. They set the district two hundred medley record this year with a great swim. He also competed on two hundred freestyle relays, four hundred freestyle relays during the season. And he was twenty-twenty-one Academic All-American and Academic All-State. Caleb is gonna go, he's signed his national letter of intent to swim with McMurray, with McMurray next year. So we're really proud of him for that. Cody Fentress is our junior boy coming back next year for, for a senior year. He's first team all district, first team all region and then honorable mention all state. Cody had an amazing season this year. Missed out on a couple of school records just by the, you know, hair, the skin of his teeth. He was district champion in the fifty freestyle and regional runner-up in the fifty freestyle, which in a non-COVID year would have, would have qualified for regionals for state. So I'm kind of bummed out about that, but it gives us a little more motivation for next year. So he'll be coming back, trying to get that automatic berth. He was also swam the hundred butterfly this year, finishing second at district and was regional finalist, finishing seventh with a time of fifty-one seventy-eight. That's good enough for second all-time this, at Central. Was just a really good swim, we're proud of him for that. Two hundred medley relay, district champion, district record holder. Regional finalist, finishing third and he swam the butterfly leg on that relay. He led off our two hundred freestyle relay that was our district champion and finished third at regionals and would have been a state qualifier in a normal year. He also competed in the one hundred, two hundred, five hundred freestyles this year. He's missed breaking the school record in the five hundred freestyle by twelve one-hundredths in October. So he's going for that next year. He was also swam on the four hundred freestyle relays throughout the year. He's twenty-twenty-one Academic All-State. Will Foster had an amazing senior year. Really came through strong when we needed to, when we needed him. He stepped up big, stepped in, into some spots where we, he wasn't exactly penciled in, but he, we needed him to fill those spots and he, he absolutely did to the, to great, great success. First team all district, first team all region and then honorable, honorable mention all state. In the fifty freestyle, he placed third at district and was a regional consolation finalist, finishing eleventh. In the hundred butterfly, he placed, finished fifth at district with a time of fifty-six point four lifetime best and would have qualified for regionals in a normal year. He was also part of our two hundred freestyle relay that was district champion and regional finalist, finishing third with an amazing swim. You know, best swim of his life for his last swim, finishing with a time of twenty-one eight for his leg. And that relay would have qualified for state in a normal year. Also competed in the two hundred medley relays and four hundred relay, four hundred freestyle relays throughout the year. Samuel Helm was our backstroker this year and last year, but this year too. His first team all district, first team all region and honorable, honorable mention all state. In the one hundred backstroke, he's district champion and regional consolation finalist, finishing ninth at regionals with a time of fifty-five to point two-six. In the fifty freestyle, he finished second at district and was twelfth at regionals with a time of twenty-two seventy-five. He led off our medley relay doing backstroke. They were district champion and district record setters. And they finished third at regionals with a time of, his backstroke leg was twenty-five sixty-six. Two hundred freestyle relay, district champion, regional finalist, finishing third. Again, they would have qualified for state in a non-COVID year. He's a twenty-twenty-one Academic All-State this year. Caleb Peacock, another junior boy, had a great year for us. First team all district, honorable mention all region, swam the two hundred freestyle, finishing third at district and was a regional consolation finalist, finishing thirteenth with a time of one fifty-five oh four. In the hundred freestyle, he placed fifth at district with a time of fifty-two five, which would have qualified for regionals in a normal year. In the four hundred freestyle relay, he was district champion and regional finalist, finishing eighth. He also competed in the two hundred medley relays, the two hundred freestyle relays, the fifty and five hundred freestyles throughout the year. And he was Academic All-State this year. Ryder Shelton had a great year. Another junior boy, we got a lot of, a big senior class coming back and he's part of that. And we expect big things from them next year. His first team all district, honorable mention all region. Finished third in the two hundred freestyle at district and was regional consolation finalist with, finishing fifteenth. In the one hundred freestyle, he finished third at district and was regional consolation finalist, finishing fifteenth with a time of fifty-one five. He anchored our four hundred freestyle relay that was district champion and regional finalist, finishing eighth with a time of fifty point seven eight. And then he was also Academic All-State. Louis Trevino Tobas, our freshman on our team, had a great freshman year. Was more of a freestyler, but stepped into some roles at districts where we needed him. This year, he's first team all districts, honorable mention all region. He swam on our four hundred freestyle relay that was district champion, regional finalist, finishing eighth. He swam the two hundred IM at district, finishing seventh with a time of two fourteen. He also swam in the one hundred backstroke this year, placing sixth at district. That would have qualified for regionals in a non-COVID year. A very competitive guy, swims a lot of things for us. He also competed in the fifty, one hundred, two hundred and five hundred freestyles this year on the two hundred medley and two hundred freestyle relays throughout the year. Ethan Welch, our, our, one of our other senior boys, had an amazing year. Really came back strong after the three-month break and was working out in the summer and, and really put, set his mind to, you know, just having the best senior year possible. He finished first team all district, first team all region, honorable mention all state. Two hundred, in the two hundred IM, he placed fourth at district and was regional consolation finalist, finishing fourteenth with a time of two oh five forty-two, which is good for fifth all-time at Central. In the one hundred breaststroke, he placed second at district and was a regional finalist, finishing eighth with a time of one oh oh forty-eight. In the two hundred medley, he anchored our two hundred medley swimming freestyle leg. He's district champion and district record holder and regional finalist, finishing third. He also anchored our two hundred freestyle relay that was district champion and regional finalist, finishing third with a time of twenty-one eight. Again, that relay would have qualified for state if not for COVID restrictions. He also competed in the fifty freestyle and four hundred freestyle relays during the season and he was selected as our twenty-twenty- was selected as our 2021 Hollins Award recipient. I'd like to thank the Dr. Detloff, Coach Chant, the SA ISD board members. I'd like, I forgot to mention, I'd like to thank Coach Corbett and the athletic training staff for all they do for our athletes and keeping them healthy and keeping them participating. We appreciate all your support this year and hope to have another great year next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lehman, that concludes our virtual recognitions. I know we've had some parents here waiting very patiently. As you can tell, we have a lot of student recognitions as we wrap up a year that had a lot of uncertainties. We're very proud of all of our coaches and all of our athletes on a number of accomplishments. So one final round of applause for our students and coaches that were connected virtually.
Thank you, Dr. Gomez. I see Rodney sneaking up behind you there, so.
I'm closing this, Coach Chant.
Yeah.
All right. Keep it moving.
And I second the patience, thank y'all for y'all's patience. It's great to recognize all of our athletes, and we appreciate y'all, y'all's patience in doing so.
Rodney? Thank you. Thank you again for your patience. Now we'd like to recognize our state champions, and I'd like to bring up Coach Odell, the head golf coach at Central High School.
First of all, I want to say thank you to the school board for having us here this evening and for recognizing all the student athletes and their accomplishments this year. Also want to thank not just the school board, but Dr. Detloff and the administration here at SA ISD, and really the entire community for all the encouragement and support that we have received. It has just really been overwhelming from Mr. Waters and the CHS faculty and staff, to Coach Chant and Coach Baker and the athletic staff here at administration, even to Mr. Henry, Jason Henry and the purchasing department. I really feel like I've become like a brother to him as much time as I spend in his office, making arrangements with hotels and purchasing and everything for all of our trips. They even asked, and I know others asked for the link to the live scoring so that they could keep track of how Ryan was doing, and Mr. Henry came up to me and said, "We were keeping track the whole way through," and, and we were just, we were so nervous as the results were coming through. But I just wanted to say thank you again to the entire community, just the encouragement, the emails, the support. It has truly been overwhelming, and I just wanted everyone to know that it, that it doesn't go unnoticed, and it is greatly appreciated. So thank you very much. I also wanted to recognize a few of the other golf individuals on our golf team that accomplished some things this year. On our boys' side, sophomore Miguel Flores Acton finished in the top 10 at district and earned all district honors. Freshman Colin Leonard finished one stroke out of the top 10, but he did earn honorable mention all district honors. And on our girls' side, junior Emily Coronado finished in seventh place individually at district and earned all district honors. So congratulations to those golfers. And then we have Ryan. When Ryan started at CHS her freshman year and joined the golf team, we knew we had something special. She was already an accomplished junior golfer, and she was always at the golf course and range, working on her game. She won many golf tournaments during her freshman season, culminating in winning the district 36A individual championship by shooting a 63, which was, which is the course record at Squaw Valley Golf Course in Glen Rose, Texas. She led the Lady Cats team to finish as district runner-up and qualify for regionals for the first time in many years. She would later qualify for state, for the state championship, where she would finish tied for 31st. After her freshman year, Ryan was determined to make it back to state and do better. She worked very hard her sophomore year, and had it not been for the COVID school shutdown in the spring of 2020, she would have no doubt led the Lady Cats to a district championship. And I truly mean that. I have no doubts we would have won that district championship. And I have no doubts that Ryan would have qualified for state again, and who knows, she may have won it last year. While Ryan was disappointed at not getting another chance to go to state and become the only golfer in SA ISD history to qualify for state four years in a row, she did not let that disappointment from distracting her from her ultimate goal, and that was to win a state championship. Ryan has worked very hard this year, her junior year. She is always working hard to improve her game. After tournaments, she is always going to the putting green or range to work on aspects of her game that she may be struggling in, which to most of us, it would appear that she doesn't need to work on that much. But that's what makes a good golfer great, knowing that your game is not perfect and working to get it as close to perfect as you can. Ryan continues to amaze individuals all over the state with her tenacity and drive to be the best. Earlier this year at a tournament at Diamondback Golf Course in Abilene, Texas, Ryan broke the course record with, get this, a 61. Even the golf course owner, who happens to be the 1971 Masters Champion, Charles Cootie, told me afterwards that Ryan was one of the most amazing young golfers that he has ever seen play on his course. Now that, that says something when someone who's put on the green jacket from Augusta says that she's an amazing golfer. Earlier this year, just a few weeks ago, Ryan won the district 26A championship by 12 strokes. She then qualified for state as the number two medalist from region one. We knew, and I think Ryan would agree, that even at district and region, she didn't play her best. But we knew that if Ryan played like she knew how to play, she would come away from the state tournament with a championship. Now, for a moment at the state championship, especially after a double bogey on 15, some of us were thinking, well, it's just not, not her day, it's just not gonna happen. But Ryan is not a quitter. She does not give up. She birdied 16, hit it to within, what, four feet? Four feet, and in the middle of, Coach Chant, was that a mini hurricane that blew through at that time? She proceeded to make that putt for birdie. And then on 17, made a very clutch par putt that did a 360 around the hole, and, and our hearts just stopped beating for a minute, but it, but it went in. She made that clutch par putt on 17, and then made a birdie putt on 18 to win by one stroke. It is my pleasure to present to Dr. Detloff and the rest of the SA ISD administration and to the SA ISD school board, the 2021 UIL Texas State Girls 6A Golf Champion from San Angelo Central High School, Ms. Ryan Honi.
Thank you, we're gonna do a quick picture.
Thank you, Coach Odell, and again, congratulations, Ryan. Next, I would like to bring in Tony Walker, the head girls' coach for the Central Bobcats. Where are you, Coach Walker? We doing boys first? My apology. Coach Eric, would you go on and come in? Coach Eric is the head boys' gymnastics coach at Central High School.
Y'all can spread out and make it. Well, first of all, thanks for having us, we appreciate it, and we appreciate everything y'all do for us, our program and all the district, and I'm gonna get this started so we can keep it moving. I'm real proud of the guys, you know, it was one of those weird years, just like it is for everybody, but we persevered and we stayed with it, and I'm really proud of our guys. They finished district champions, regional champions, and then finished the year up as third place at, at state. I'm gonna start with freshmen, I have one that's not here, Tyler Duncan. He competed on floor and rings, and they have Michael Skinner is here today, and he started out kinda in middle school, a little late, and he did floor exercise for us this year, and next year he's gonna have to be working the other five events, because we don't have much, I'm gonna only have just a few guys, so they're all gonna be working the all-around. Next, I have Logan Kipfer. He came in and competed floor. He was at regionals, he was eighth, and he was honorable mention at district and second team all region. Next, we have Hunter McCowsky, and Hunter competed pommel horse. At district, he was fourth, regionals eighth. He was second team all district and second team all region. Next, we have Ian Hamby, he's gonna be Malone Senior next year, and he competed rings, district, he was fifth, regionals fifth. He also competed vault, and he finished seventh at regionals, high bar. At regionals, he was eighth. He was second team all district and first team all region. Next, we have Hunter Walker, competed pommel horse for us. He was first at district, second at regionals, and eighth at state. Also competed parallel bars, district, he was fifth at district, and at regionals, he was 10th. He was first team all district, first team all region, and second team all state. Next, Nick Hastings. At district on floor, he was fifth, and at regionals, third. Rings, he was sixth at district. Vault, he won district on vault, and he was also first at regionals also. High bar, regionals, he finished ninth. He was a first team all district and first team all region. Next, Cody Cox. He competed floor. At district, he was third, regionals fourth. Rings, he was fourth at regionals. Vault, he was fourth at district. Parallel bars, regional seventh. High bar, district, sixth place, regional sixth place. Cody was first team all district and first team all region. And last but not least, Emiliano Hinojos. He actually competed the all-around for us, all six events. At district, he was sixth on floor. Regionals, he was first on floor, and at state, he finished third. Pommel horse, at district, he was third, regionals fourth. Rings, district, second. Regionals, first, and at state, he was fourth. Vault, district, he was second, regionals fifth, and state, he finished 10th. Parallel bars, district, first, regionals second, and state, eighth. High bar, district, first, regionals first, state, sixth. All-around, he was second at district, first at regionals, and he finished third at state. Emiliano was first team all district, all region, and all state. All these guys did a great job. Like I said, we have five, gosh, I forget, five seniors, Emiliano, Cody Cox, Nick Hastings, and Hunter Walker, Robbie Scut, he was not here, so. And then we have another freshman, Tyler Duncan, that was not here this evening. But I'm extremely proud of the guys, and thank y'all for everything, and we appreciate y'all so much. Thank you.
Let me say while they're walking out that gymnastics is, is new to me in the extent there's only one school in the Houston area that does gymnastics. Other than that, that is it for the Houston area. So coming to San Angelo, gymnastics was something new to me, and wow, what a fabulous group of gentlemen. And who we have coming in now, Coach Walker and the Lady Cats gymnastics team, and just some phenomenal things that happened with their team this year. Come on, Coach Walker, come on in, and if you'd have the ladies just walk around here and face out towards the.
You just put me out in the hallway with 14 hungry girls. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Detloff and the school board members for inviting us here this evening. It is an honor and a privilege to introduce these wonderful young ladies to you and share their accomplishments this year. The last time we were here before you, I was with the state champions of 2019. Last year's team in 2020 finished ranked number one pre-COVID. We finished our year with a number one ranking and graduated six seniors. We owe a lot of our success this year to the leadership of last year's seniors and their inspiration. This year, the Lady Cats remain undefeated for the third year in a row. We are the district champions for the 20th consecutive year. We are the regional champions for the 20th consecutive year. And we are the 2021 state champions, setting a new team scoring record previously held by our competitors, LD Bell High School, that ran for 16 years, along with setting a new team school scoring record in compulsory. These ladies did a wonderful job this year, very proud of what they accomplished in a difficult, challenging year. When I do name them, I'm gonna name them from freshmen to seniors. Everybody will not, it's not in high school gymnastics, not everybody is eligible for awards unless they compete both days, but that doesn't mean their contribution to the team or to that particular meet is any less significant, because it holds great significance, and it did at the state championship this year. So our freshman members, and I'm gonna start with their in order on this end, is Ms. Mariel Hartzke. Mariel competed on floor and last-minute balance beam at us for state this year, so she did a great job. Freshman McKinley Nile competed at state for us on bars and vault and floor. Caroline Still was first team all district, first team all region, first team all state. She was the state silver medalist on vault, seventh on uneven bars, and ninth in the all-around when the top 10 are recognized. Freddie Rosenberg was, competed for us at state on the balance beam, so that takes care of our freshman class, and they added a significant amount to us this year. Sophomore, we have one sophomore, and that's Ms. Ella Burns, right there in the white dress. She was first team all district and first team all region and competed vault, bars, and floor for us this year. Juniors are Karen Dunn, and Karen competed vault for us this year. Haley Ditmore, who competed vault and. Haley Ditmore, who competed vault and bars for us this year. Ally Hamby, who competed vault for us and Caitlin Lidle, who competed beam for us this year. And Hannah O'Neil, who was second team all district and second team all region on balance beam. And then we have Ms. Jaden Sawyer, who was first team all district and was the district beam champion. She was first team all region and was the regional beam champion. She was first team all state and was the state beam champion, scoring a 10 at state and tying an existing state beam combined record held by former Lady Cat gymnast Chaney Collins and tying a school record. She is a state bronze medalist on uneven bars and state silver medalist on floor and the all around. Madison Vogel is first team all district. She's district champion on vault, bars, beam and the all around. She is first team all region, regional champion on all events, including the all around. She was first team all state, setting a new record and scoring a 10 on the way to becoming the state vault champion for the third consecutive year. State silver medalist on bars and beam, state champion on floor and broke a 19-year-old scoring record on the way to becoming the state all around champion while tying and breaking two school records on vault and the all around. And Haley Wardlaw was a beam specialist for us this year and floor. And then last but not least, our only senior that we have this year, Ms. Haley Smith. And she is first team all district, first team all region, first team all state, placing in the top 10 at state with a fourth place finish on bars, seventh on beam, eighth on floor and seventh in the all around. And considering that Haley is our only loss this year and we will pick up some new freshmen that are going to add to us, I think we are looking pretty good to win next year's state championship. So thank you.
And thank you, ladies, for being so patient. We should appreciate that. Congratulations.
Keep storming through our recognition, so go ahead.
Mr. Lehman, Dr. Detloff and members of the board, I hope you're ready for the next one.
We are.
We are pleased to recognize talented art students from both Lakeview High School and Central High School. These students have completed and excelled in the Texas Art Educational Visual Arts Scholastic Event. The SAISD learner profile skills of communicating, collaborating, creating and thinking critically flourish in the fine arts. And these skills help our students excel in becoming future-ready. I'd like to welcome CHS art sponsor, Ms. Suzanne Horner, to the podium to tell us more about both Lakeview High School and Central High School art students and their accomplishment this year. Ms. Georgia Edwards could not be here with us this evening, but we appreciate Ms. Horner speaking about our Lakeview students as well. Thank you for all you do to cultivate the talents of our students.
Hi, good evening. I did not bring a script and even if I had one, I'd go off script anyway. So I will, I'll try to be fast about this. Tiffany, I think is going to be my clicker, my vanna as we do this. But real quick, that was introduced, the Visual Arts Scholastic Event, which we shortened to VACE, is basically a UIL competition for our visual arts students. It is, it was created by and supported by the Texas Art Education Association. And so I think in Texas, we're really lucky to have that opportunity for our students because that way they can compete and show off their talents for their visual art and art, just like our academic UIL or athletic UIL events, as far as that's concerned. Region 15, which is a different type of organization, not like our athletic organizations, but Region 15 is basically something like our, oh my gosh, the region service centers. Service centers, that's right? Yeah, that's how, that's how that would be organized. So our, our Region 15 goes north to Winters, east to probably early Brady Mason, south to Del Rio and then to the west out to Ozona and Sonora. With that being said, San Angelo schools, we have the largest schools within our region with CHS and Lakeview. So we have the bigger schools. We have a lot of small schools that feed into our region. This year with COVID, they made the decision back in the spring of 2020, going forth through this year, that we would always, we would have a virtual event regardless, not knowing what the year was going to bring for us. And so I'm glad that they made that decision. That way we could go forward and not have any sins or buts about how the competition works. So we, our students were not able to represent themselves in person with their artwork, but we did everything visually online. But still, we got to have that, the competition. So the way that our divisions are set up, we have Division One through Four and they're based on student credits. So this would be a Division One piece and this is one of our students from Central High School. It's a piece from his teacher, Heather Shup York. And it may not, you may not be able to see at the bottom down there, but it's a mixed media piece. It's done acrylic paint, Sharpie on canvas. It's a very expressive piece. So when you see these slides with these state advancing works, you'll see a lot of range within our students. The next one's a pencil drawing and it's very photorealistic. This was done again by a student that would belong to Heather Shup York, Petronil. And it's done with blended eraser, kneaded eraser and it's on paper. And it's a very pretty piece, very photorealistic of, I think of her grandfather. The next one's a 3D piece and it's constructed. It's made of cardboard and glue and paint and it's based off of a mask. Again, our kids are tied into some things or plugged into some things that not all of us adults are aware of. But this, I think, is based off of a character. And again, it's a 3D piece. Notice how we had to have it photographed and see different views of it so that when the kids were, their artwork was viewed or judged, that they were able to see from all different views as far as that's concerned. And then Division Two, it's our next division up. This is a piece by Cecilia Dunlap, Cecilia Dunlap from the teacher Dana Dawson at CHS. And it's a color pencil piece done with micron black pen. All of that is detailed done with just pen, all the black and white in the background. And the color is of course done with colored pencil. What's the next one? This one too is by Leah Flores. She's from Blaine Shelton's class at CHS. It's a painting from one of his painters and it's done with gold metallic paint and acrylic paint on canvas. And then Division Four, Division Four is the highest division. Either these kids are in AP or they have got the highest amount of credits. This is a really gorgeous piece by Cynthia Castro. She was also one of our student athletes that was recognized. I recognized her name earlier. I'm not going to try to pronounce the, pronounce the name of her piece because I don't, I won't do it justice. But it's a really gorgeous piece done with gold acrylic paint, watercolor pencil, charcoal pencil on paper. And that's the artist on the left and then of course their subject that's on the right, right there with the photograph. And it was a really gorgeous piece. The photographs don't do the justice to the artwork, seeing what our kids do. And one thing I do want to mention to you real quick, when the kids do this face to face, they actually have their physical artwork with them. They get to go in and have an interview with a judge or what we call a juror. And they get to speak about their piece and talk about their artwork. And I think that's a very, very important step. A lot of these kids will probably not go on to do anything with their artwork, but the life lesson they learn from this process, I think, is super important. It's just like going out for a job interview or doing something. You're talking about yourself and you're explaining yourself and you're representing yourself through whatever means. In this case, it's through their art. This year, since we had to do things all virtual, the students, the students wrote about their artwork and that was the only thing that represented their artwork in terms of what the juror had to read about that. So that was a super important part of the process, them writing about their work, explaining what it was, explaining the concept behind it, the decisions they made and of course the expression they put into their artwork. So it's, it's more than just art. There's a whole lot that goes into the process when we do the visual art events. I'm the regional director here for Region 15, which I think is just important to mention because we get to host the event in San Angelo. We've been doing that for the past three years. And although I know that our numbers were down this year, y'all don't know that, but I know that. But anyway, our numbers were down this year because of COVID reasons. But throughout the state, we still had over 22,000 people or students participate in VACE this year. That's 22,000 students doing artwork, which is, I think, amazing considering we had no idea what we were going to be, be able to do with our kids, whether we're face to face, not face to face or whether. And I'm speaking for all the other districts within the state. I'm very grateful that in San Angelo, we were in class and we were able to be with our students face to face, doing the things that we did this year. That was, that was super important. So when we talk about thanking the board and all of our APs and administrators in here, thank you for working so hard to get us back in the classroom with our kids because that was super important. Virtual doesn't cut it and trying to do this kind of stuff with our kids through a computer screen or Zoom is not the same thing. So thank you very much for that. I told you I'd get off script a little bit, I would. Anyway, I wanted to do that, I think we're seguing to the fine arts, to the rest of the fine arts stuff. So that's, this is our visual arts stuff. The other thing too, though, real quick, is we had six out of 12, six of our kids that advanced to state this year were from San Angelo. We had 12 throughout the whole, the entire region. Region 15 is small. We do compete against huge regions like Dallas, Fort Worth, Houston and stuff like that, where those regions have over 2,000 to 3,000 entries per year. Again, we're a small, we're a smaller region, but we work hard to have our kids compete with and be exposed to all of those larger schools and all the things that they have going for them also too. So we're lucky to be able to have that opportunity also. I think that's it, yes? Okay, thank y'all.
Well, it's sponsors like that that truly show how our people make the difference. So thank you, we really appreciate that. And I just have to say the visuals on that, if that's not what it looks like, if you're saying that's not nearly comparing to it, it looks beautiful there. So incredible work. We know y'all have had long recognitions and we apologize for that, but we do appreciate you bearing with us because it's so important to show that we celebrate all the ways our students are smart. So whether that be in athletic endeavors or in visual arts or as we will see here in a minute, through their musical talents, we think that is really important. We want y'all to be aware of what's going on in our schools. So I'm going to pass it over to our Director of Fine Arts and Advanced Academics, Tiffany Hebner, to tell you some more ways we're going to celebrate some of our students.
Hi, good evening, board and Dr. Detloff. I'll just make this quick. Landon, come on in. This is our choir director from Central High School. And we'll have our other director, Wilt Sunday Vought as his assistant. And then we have Amy Harris from Lincoln.
Thank you, board and administrators. What a night and what a semester. This spring, as we prepared for UIL concert sight reading evaluations, our main group contest for each year, we had to overcome some stringent COVID protocols and attendance challenges. But like Ms. Horner said, we were glad that we had our students there and in class. In fact, we've had a very busy and successful spring. As we shared with you at a previous board meeting, we had two students named to the TMA All-State Choir. We also hosted the Schoolwide Talent Show that had to be rescheduled into March due to snowvid. We also had a, our show choir, the Harmonicats, held their spring show two weeks ago. And if you've never seen that group or familiar with what that is, there's really nothing like it in West Texas. We're one of the few schools in the state that has a show choir that sings and dances very aerobically. So hopefully someday you can check that out. And then we hosted our spring end of year concert last week. And then this past week, we've been recording with our state UIL solo qualifiers. And in fact, we have 36 of those competing at state UIL contests virtually. And their, all their submissions get uploaded this Friday, Lord willing. Tonight, we're here to talk about UIL concert sight reading evaluations back from April 15th. And you can think of this like our STAR examinations. These are adjudicated at the highest level by two panels of three judges each. And those judges are comprised of highly esteemed colleagues with decades of experience and demonstrated contest excellence. And with music spring contests, there's just one level. You don't advance to state. I mean, it's just one and done and you've got to be, you've got to be prepared. I want to apologize for not having our trophies here tonight. They're actually at the awards engravers getting ready for our award ceremony this Friday evening. But as you can see from this first picture, this is our men's choir. They compete as a JV tenor bass choir. And it's a small group. Many schools in our division or 6A will shy away from taking a group this small. They'd prefer to have a group of, you know, 70 or 80. But in a group this size, there's nowhere for anyone to hide. You have to teach and you have to take everybody. That's a challenge, but it's incredibly rewarding to get a small ragtag group of boys united in common purpose and to achieve success together. In fact, most of these boys have never been to a UIL contest before in their school experience. So the fact that we went this year and they got straight ones, that's the highest rating you can get in concert performance and then still an excellent sight reading, I'm very proud of them for doing that. And then I'm going to let Mrs. Vought, my associate director, talk about her combined girls group.
Hello, good evening. My name is Sunday Vought and I teach choir at Central High School. I've been with SAISD for 15 years and a few extra, if you count the years that I was at CHS as a student. The classes that I direct are Concert Ladies, orange, sixth period, Concert Ladies, blue, seventh period. And both of those classes are made up mostly of 99% freshmen or new to choir students. And then I teach fifth period belavoche women. And these are mostly the sophomore students, a handful of juniors and then a few seniors sprinkled in every year. I assist in Landon's classes that he teaches. And we make a really great team, being able to balance both the high and the low parts of the choral aspect. So this year was rather interesting. It presented many challenges to our students, both academically and personally, for them and for their families. We found that the bond of fine arts classes really helped to bring the students together and strive for excellence. Last year, after many months of preparing for UIL, our students were not able to finish the school year or to compete in the UIL contest due to COVID, COVID restrictions. This year, we realize to not take any of our school opportunities for granted and to make the most of every situation we're presented. One of our very favorite ever events that we have throughout the year is our UIL concert and sight reading contest. It takes place in the spring. They work all year to own those skills that are needed to do really well for that performance. With so many of our students facing the COVID struggles of academic eligibility, sicknesses, quarantines, incoming and withdrawing students or the virtual learning students that are arranging daily transportation to come to choir each day due to it being an in-person class. We were determined to make the most of this school year's UIL contest. Normally, how we enter the trouble voices are to combine both the Concert Ladies classes as a medium group of women in the sub non-varsity group. And then we enter belavoche separately as a non-varsity. But due to the above-mentioned COVID struggles and the fluctuating numbers, we had to get really creative this year and we did something we've never done before. We combined all three trouble classes together to form one big women's group. Like we call it the mega, mega, like the Xena Warrior Princess. Like we were like, all the girls sing and it worked really well. We found that there were safety in numbers because like I said, things were fluctuating back and forth every week to two weeks. Safety in numbers and the students that were in that could really bond together. These were classes that had different ability levels and they were all expected to rise up a level of difficulty. These ladies did not meet together during the normal school hours. They're from three different classes and from two different campuses. Students had to come up after school and practice together throughout these six weeks. Students enjoyed singing with others and working on the blend and the balance of their voice part. And it was amazing to see those little learning light bulbs go off as we continued to get closer to the contest date. Especially getting to see in the children's faces, those students who were preparing for a contest who had never had the opportunity to perform in the years past, since most of the large group were made of the freshmen, who did not compete last year and they were very unlikely to have competed during their seventh grade year. The ladies enjoyed being part of something unique, something special and something successful, all while wearing masks. If you've ever tried even just talking with masks on, I'm sure you understand the complication it would be to sing at a length with the masks on. And then spread out too. And that's another challenge that involves your ear training. Well, in conclusion, the combined women's choirs received a combination of ones on stage and then performed in the sight reading for three different judges. and then performed in the sight reading for three different judges, also earning ones, which resulted in a sweepstakes, the highest award given. On behalf of my students, myself, Mr. Gilmore, thank you for your support for the fine arts and for continuing to support the choral music even during a pandemic. Thank you.
And then this next picture here is our varsity mixed choir. That's what competes at the highest level. And we were very honored this year that they were able to do what we call the clean sweep. So they got a one from every single judge across the board. And considering the fact that we went after some other schools that are quite a bit larger than us... No? No? Well...
Run with Permian.
Yeah. Yeah. I didn't think there would be a day that we would do that, and Permian would go after us, and they did not do that. But, you know, everyone's facing their own challenges this year, but it was definitely a feeling of pride for our students to do that. And also, not just that, but they were also doing that simultaneously while they were working on a combined performance with Angelo State University Choir and Orchestra that we did about three weeks ago. And that was a really great experience for them. So anyway, thank you for hearing this report tonight, and I would like to invite you to a future concert sometime. If you've never had the opportunity to go to a Christmas or a spring concert with our students, you're really missing out. In my mind, there's not really anything quite like hearing and seeing all of our students from all ethnicities and socioeconomic backgrounds to be united in song and purpose, and to see how they work together and support each other. And not just our current students, but we end our spring concert every year with all alumni joining us onstage in an unbroken legacy of dedication to excellence. I hope we can entice you to join us for one of our concerts next year. Thank you for your time and support. Good evening.
My name is Amy Harris. I'm the choir director at Lakeview High School and Lincoln Middle School. This would be my second year working for SAISD. What I wanted to share with you all today is Lincoln Middle School, when we went to our UIL concert and sight reading competition, we managed to, my students managed to achieve an excellent rating in concert and a superior rating in sight reading. This superior rating that we got in sight reading is actually the first superior rating that the Lincoln Middle School Choir has gotten at UIL competition in 10 years. Those students worked extraordinarily hard for this. They didn't get to go last year due to the COVID restrictions and the cancellation of the competition, but they have gone above and beyond. Every single day, these kids walked into my room, and they chose to strive for greatness and to try to do their best, every single day. And like, I was, every day, I'm excited to go there and work with these kids because they're wonderful, and they're just the most amazing little human beings. So they worked so hard for this. They 100% deserved to have gotten this, and I'm beyond proud of their progress and how hard they worked this year, and that greatness that they've been working for throughout this entire year, even with these hardships. So, thank you.
Amy was one of my students. I did not teach her to sing, but I did teach her some math. That's right, and she was a Landon and Sunday's student as well. She's doing a great job, good job, all of you. Thank you.
Thank all of you all for being here. We appreciate it very much.
Yes, thank you, guys. So our high school, Central High School band directors cannot be here tonight because they are out on the field with Lee and Glenn's beginning bands. So they're all working as a team tonight, holding a concert, but they left us a little message. So if you could play that. I don't know how to...
My name is Jason Jones. I'm the band director at Central High School. We're very sorry that we could not be there with you today. All of the band staff is over at the stadium, training the future Bobcat Band members for their beginning band concert. We're very excited to hear that. We're here to talk to you today about the successes of the Central High School Band at UIL Concert and Sight Reading on April the 1st that we hosted here in San Angelo. The Central High School Wind Ensemble, the group that I conducted, went and made first divisions in concert and sight reading. First divisions are the highest rating that a UIL judge can bestow upon a band.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Dearborn, and I direct the Symphonic Band here at Central High School, and we received straight ones in sight reading.
My name is Kristen Ellis, and I'm the Director of the Central High School Concert Band. And this year, the Concert Band received straight ones in concert and sight reading.
Hi, my name is Mike Berry, and I'm the Director for the Honored Winds here at Central High School. And our group also received ones in concert and in sight reading.
Hi, my name is Caleb Leonard, and I'm one of the Assistant Band Directors here at Central and also the Percussion Instructor. This year, our groups performed in the indoor percussion circus. Indoor percussion is very similar to marching band, except it's just drumline and a front ensemble, and we perform in high school gyms around the state. We, for the first time, competed in an Austin circuit and received first place in their in-person competition. And our usual circuit that we compete at around in Lubbock, out of all the percussion groups that we've performed with in finals, we received second place overall.
Hi, this is Mike Berry again. I'm also the Director of the Central High Jazz Band. Just wanted to let you guys know that the Central Jazz Band participated in a virtual contest with Tarleton State University, and we ended up winning. And not only did we win, but we had several students receive Outstanding Soloist Awards.
So as you can see, we've had a very successful year with the Central High School Band. We are looking forward to really great things next year. I can't tell you how much we appreciate the support that we get from our school board and our administration. It's the best around from anyone. We look forward to seeing you on Friday nights for a Night at the Opera.
I felt like I was at the Grammys, you know, when they do the awards and somebody's off in some, like, they're off somewhere, we're filming something, and I'm like, "Here they are." Well, I had some pictures, real fast. So this is the Concert Band. This is their Symphonic Band. Their Wind Band. The Wind Ensemble. This is the only picture they had of the Jazz Band, together. They are. Can you imagine? That would be fun. And this is our indoor percussion, and that is a, you've never had a chance to watch them. That's a lot of fun. It gets really loud, obviously, indoor percussion, but great group. They've done a really great job. I've had the honor of actually listening to them at their concert and sight reading contests behind the stage, and, guys, our future is, like, really bright. Our kids are good. They just, I think fine arts just embodies our learner profile so well, and I'm just really proud of them, and it's an honor just to even work alongside of them.
I'd like to welcome our Advanced Academic sponsors, Mr. Heck Knudsen of Lakeview, and Mr. Kevin McSpadden of Central, to come up here and talk about Advanced Academics.
I'm Heck Knudsen. I'm the UIL Academic Coordinator over at Lakeview, and we had a really great year this year with our kids. Been a challenge, like everybody has said, with COVID and not having events to go to. So district was our only event that we actually went to this year. Our Social Studies team placed first at, or second in district, and then we had first-place Regional Qualifier Daisy Hare, who went on to the regional competition and was eighth at Region. And then Literary Criticism, we were the second-place team, and Daisy Hare was second-place individual, and Michaela Wall, third-place individual. Science, RJ Bohannon was our fourth-place in Science. Editorial Writing, Michaela Berger, third-place in a Regional Qualifier. Francisco Ocampo in Current Issues and Events was fifth-place in an alternate to Region. Matthews Wiki was first-place in Feature Writing in a Regional Qualifier. Victoria Villa, fifth-place in News Writing in a Regional Alternate. And then our Accounting Team was first-place in District and qualified for Region. And then we had first-place individual with Yamalet Madrono, and Jared Gregg was second-place. And then we had a tie for third-place with Logan Molina and Francisco Ocampo. And that was our year in UIL this year. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everybody. Dr. Detloff and Board members, I just want to second what I've heard many times tonight. Thank you for taking time to recognize our students. I know that you have a lot of business to tend to after I go home, and thank you just for taking this time. My name is Kevin McSpadden. I am the UIL Coordinator at Central High School. And I just want to brag about our students for a minute, because they're really, really bright. And in fact, if you don't mind, I'd like to just model for you for a moment just how bright they are. I'd like to say some things about that. One thing I want to tell you is that a Roman soldier walked into an ice cream shop, held up two fingers, and said, "I would like five scoops." The philosopher Rene Descartes was approached by his friends, and they said, "Renee, would you like to go to a play?" He said, "I think not," and he ceased to exist. And if you want to know why you can't trust atoms, it's because they make up everything. Now, you may be scratching your head, but when I tell those jokes to my students, well, truthfully, they roll their eyes, but after they do that, they laugh because they understand what I'm talking about. Google it if you didn't get those, because all of those were actually kind of funny, if you knew. Sorry. Okay. So a few thank yous, and then I want to tell you about the kids. I need to thank Mr. Waters, because he was so flexible and supportive this year, we were actually able to have a UIL season. Claire Hoag, our librarian, let us invade her space on numerous occasions, and she even helped us host our district meet. Laura Wood from the English Department gave up a lot of time to help serve not only at our district meet that we hosted, but also the Regional Pod, which was a new thing, that was new this year, and she helped us put it on. Curtis Hepler from Social Studies filled in last minute to direct an event with zero experience and did a phenomenal job. So he doesn't know it, but I'm going to recruit him next year. I want to thank our custodial staff, because we hosted two events in multiple buildings while other things were going on, and they took great care of us, specifically Jamie and Mary at CHS. They're irreplaceable. And of course, anything that goes on through CHS goes through the desk of Maria Luna. So without her, our lives would all be a big black hole, and I just can't thank her enough for all of her help and support. I'll be mentioning my coaches as I go, but without further ado, the UIL Academic Team for San Angelo Central High School. We had quite a few regional advancers this year, and I'm going to kind of start and organize by coach. And so I want to start with the Speech Team, which was coached by Kobe Evers, brand-new this year. He was a first-year teacher and coach, and he knocked it out of the park. Out of the 15 spots available to advance to the Regional Meet, Kobe and his crew filled 11 of them. So here are the events and the students. In Lincoln-Douglas Debate, Alyssa Van Zant and Aneah Dixon both advanced, and Alyssa placed fifth at the Regional Meet. In Informative Speaking, Lexer Canlam and Aneah Dixon both advanced. Lexer was fifth in the Region. Aneah was sixth. In Persuasive Speaking, Isabella Royer, a freshman, was your district champion. Alyssa Van Zant also advanced, and then Alyssa was sixth at the Regional Meet. In Poetry Interpretation, Brianna Roberts, Tyree Lewis, and Mariah Mayville went 1-2-3. They swept that event. At Region, Tyree was fourth, and Brianna was fifth. In Prose Interpretation, Jack McLaughlin and Mia Winters both advanced, and Mia took fifth. That's a lot of names. Let me put that in perspective for you. The Speech Team was the district champion, and they beat the next-closest team by over 100 points with only five events. So that tells you how dominant they were. And they were the regional runner-up Speech Team. It turns out, they had the most people in the finals. We just got beat by one more school in a couple more events. So they did a phenomenal job. On the academic side of things, I'd like to do a quick rundown of those events and the advancers as well. In Accounting, Judith Kitchens is our coach, and she had Megan Combs as the third-place in District, advanced to Regional, and was a qualifier. We had a new sponsor for our Math Events this year, and that was Nikki Parker. She's new to CHS, but she's very, very experienced in UIL. She took on one of our biggest teams and had a great number of advancers. In Calculator, Caleb Perkey, Natasha Flores-Acton, Justin Delacruz, and Yuling Zhu all advanced, and the Calculator was the district champion team. In Current Issues, coached by one of our veterans, Rhonda Hatfield, who, by the way, was the 2020 Teacher of the Year for Central High School, and of course, UIL is a big part of what she does for our school. In that event, in Current Issues, Olivia Rutherford placed first in our District. She lost on a hair tiebreaker at Region and then was 10th at State. But just to put that in perspective, the difference between first place and 10th place at the State Meet was a razor-thin margin. So Olivia is really not that far from being a state medalist. In Computer Science, Nancy Thompson is our coach. She's been a longstanding member of our UIL team. Miguel Flores-Acton, Francesca Untalan, Eduardo Palacios, and Ian Shipper were the Computer Science Team Champions, and they advanced and competed. They were the fifth-place team in our Region. All Journalism Events are coached by Dara Oji. She may be the busiest coach we have. She coaches five different events and also does the yearbook at CHS. She has copy editing, which Mallory Anderson was our district champion of. In Editorial Writing, Chloe Sawyer advanced and was a Regional Qualifier. In Feature Writing, Paula Mazanet advanced. In Headline Writing, Juliana Pigeon was first in District and lost out on being a State Qualifier by a tiebreaker. She was fourth at the Regional Meet. In News Writing, Mallory Anderson and Chloe Sawyer both advanced to the Regional Meet. And that wraps up the Journalism Events. In Literary Criticism, Leah Barker is our coach. She joined us this year. She was a first-year sponsor, but she fit right in and saw some immediate success. Gracie Barker, her daughter, she had the privilege of coaching, was the district third-place and was a regional advancer. Mathematics, coached by Nikki Parker. Patrick Smith was the district champion. Ariane Shake, Justin Delacruz, and Caroline Anderson round out that team, and they were the district champion team. In Numbers Sense, another event Ms. Parker coaches. Patrick Smith, again, was the district champion. Ariane Shake, Maisha Allen, Justin Delacruz are the members of that team, and they were the district champion. All advanced to the Regional Meet. In Ready Writing, which is one of the events I coached, Gracie Barker was the third-place finisher at District and competed at the Regional Meet. Science is coached by both Kendra Lanford and Melissa Pelizi. They tag-team it because they have maybe the largest overall team we have on the academic side. Their combined expertise helps them perform well in all three areas. And just so you know, the science contest has biology, chemistry, and physics all combined into one big torture chamber. Excuse me, I meant test. So in that event, Ariane Shake, Lincoln Hama, Philip Bordner, Carly Curran, Caroline Anderson, Camilla Lane were the members of our district champion Science Team who competed at the regional level, and Philip Bordner was the regional runner-up on the Biology section. And lastly, the Spelling Team, which is the other one that I coached. Patrick Smith was the district champion. Gracie Barker was third. Laura Johnson is our other team member. They were a district team champion, and Patrick Smith placed fourth at the Region Meet. I'm really proud of my kids. As you can tell, I think that they not only compete well because of how intelligent they are, but how hard-working they are. And I always brag that, to me, my favorite thing about the UIL team at Central is that whenever we do get to travel, they represent our school and our community well. They are some of the best-behaved kids, hardest-working kids. I mean, who gives up their lunch break to go learn spelling words? But they do. And so the last thing I want to tell you about them is that this year, we won the District Meet by over 400 points. And just so you know, that encompasses the one-act play, the speech events, and all the academic contests. So under that banner, with so many different things being counted, we beat the next-closest school in our area by 400 points. And that just makes me really proud to get to work with these kids. At the Regional Meet, we tied for eighth out of a total of 38 schools, most of whom are the Metroplex. And it gives me a great deal of pride to tell you that we beat a great number of schools who have a lot more kids than us because of the quality of the individuals that we work with. So once again, thank you for your time tonight, and thank you for allowing me to brag about our wonderful kids at CHS.
Okay, we are going to continue celebrating the ways our students are smart, including part of our CTE program. part of our C T E program. So through our career and technical education program, we have student leadership organizations that the children can choose to participate in and then they can compete at the state and national level through that. So we have seven of those, they're called S L Os because they're student leadership organizations. So we have F F A, Skills USA, B P A, F C C L A, Taffy, Pro Start and DECA. And I'm going to tell you a little bit about some of the students that went on to state competition there. I also have one sponsor that was able to be here tonight that we will ask up here shortly. So for F F A, we had for Central High School, we had three students who advanced onto the state level for Tractor Tech and that was Sutton, Grantham, Pierce Elkins and Heston Mitchell. And then for Lakeview High School, our students had advanced to state for cotton, Jajin, were Landra Williams, Corbin Kindella, Omar Ponse and Gisela Ponse. And the S I S D teacher sponsors were Aubrey McLean and Parks Tucker. And then we have, the S L O we have now is Skills USA. And for this S L O, our Central High School student state winners that we had were Santos Ventaria, Dom Curry and Edward Ramirez. And those were all for building maintenance. And Santos will be competing at the nationals in June. So we're very proud of that. And Raymond Barnard is the sponsor for that. And then for B P A, Business Professionals of America, we have quite a few students from Central advancing to state. We have William Foster for fundamental accounting, Megan Combs for payroll accounting and she will go on past state. Emily Jones for personal financial management. Ariana Pina for fundamental word processing. Matthew Muncie for basic office systems and procedures. Mir Kerion for fundamental spreadsheet applications and she will go on past state. Maya Minor for graphic design promotion. Cadence York, Maya Minor and Sammy Millward for website design team. Jennifer Puentez for interview skills. Daniela Valdez for human resource management. Sammy Millward again for medical diagnostic coding. Ysel Oveta for health administration procedures. Michaela Wall for computer modeling. And then we also have Marcus Luna, Margarita Torres Fabella, Nguyen Tran and Thomas Mann. And you can just see from this, all the future vetting us opportunities that we have. I mean, looking from website design to medical diagnostic coding. So these are giving our kids those opportunities to have their own unique future and what they really want to pursue and opportunities to compete at it and excel. And our sponsors for that were Judith Kitchens and Chad Wilson. And here are just a few. These are our national qualifiers. We're so proud of them moving on. And just a few more pictures of the kiddos. And then for S C C L A, which our sponsors are Michaela Morgan and Jody Sabotka. And our C H S students advancing to state, Julia Duran for public policy advocate and she is actually going to be going on past state. Rayleigh Torres for public policy advocate and she also will be going past state. Jill Gersh for Focus on Children. Adara Robles for Focus on Children. Emily Sanchez for Focus on Children. I had their specifics, but then we also have Navia Hernandez, Zoe Muckel, Mia Flores, Faith Garcia, Coco Vina, Ashlyn Kilpatrick and Delaney Grimes. And here are some pictures of them competing. And then for Taffy, which is our Texas Association of Future Educators, so we might have some of these someday teaching for us. The C H S students that advanced to state for this are Abby Kalmbach for Interactive Bulletin Board, varsity division. Jasmine Garcia also for Interactive Bulletin Board. Bree Self for Lesson Planning and Humanities and she is going on past state. Melody Smith for Children's Literature, K through third grade. Alexis Crawford also going past state for teacher created materials. Cambry Morales also advancing on for Children's Literature pre-K. Kristin Martinez, again, she is also advancing and that is for teacher created materials. Maddie Owls for teacher created materials also advancing and Ashlyn Kilpatrick will also be advancing and Jody Sabotka is also the sponsor for that. So a lot of kiddos going on there. And here are some of their pictures of them in action at competition. And then we have our sponsor, Ms. Lindsay Ward, who I also want to brag a little on her because she's saying don't do it, but she was recognized by DECA as an outstanding new DECA sponsor. So we're very proud of her and she can tell you a little bit more about her kiddos.
I brought y'all stuff. Hi, my name is Lindsay Ward and I am the marketing entrepreneurship and career prep teacher with Central High School and I run the DECA program. And so last year was my first year with Central and running the DECA program. We took three students to state and two of those returned to us. This year we took 23 students to state. We also launched a new entrepreneurship program this year and we were super excited about that. Mr. Waters has been essential in helping us get that started and supporting me as we launched that program. So much that we actually started off with three sections of entrepreneurship classes and additional 70 students in the online program and the virtual academy taking that class. So we were super excited that that many students are interested and potentially owning their own business someday. So DECA focuses on marketing, entrepreneurship and finance and teaching students about those fields of potential jobs through projects and project management. So in competition, these students were able to work together in teams or by themselves. So we had a total of 23 students working on 13 teams. All 23 students in 13 teams advanced to state. So we were super excited about that. We actually wiped district. We were pretty excited. I'm pretty competitive. I don't know if you can tell. So there were other than two teams, nobody in our district scored higher than our teams. Our teams beat each other, but nobody else beat our teams. So we were super pumped about that. So when we got to state, we had Catherine Crawford with a business growth plan. Now that, I want to talk specifically about that business growth, business growth plan. She owns her own business already. It's called Wishful Parties. She does party princesses. They've been on the front page of the newspaper. She has hired her friends to be her party princesses and they are making like big bucks. They went from having like three parties a month to like being so booked up, they have to turn people away. It's really cool to see them have this mind of entrepreneurship and already be doing stuff like that. So she made state finalist at state and next year will compete again. Brianna Aguilar, Christina De La Garza and Carlos Pina worked together on the finance operations research event, working with a local real estate agent on their business and actually had the opportunity to experience what it's like to be in real estate and learn more about that market and do a marketing campaign for them. Kayla Castillo, Ethan Cullum and Charles Janot competed in the franchise business plan and created a mock franchise plan to bring a restaurant to town. They did a wonderful job. Jesse Kahas competed in the independent business plan. He created a business, he is also in our cosmetology program out at Howard College. And so did an entire business plan on what it would be like for himself to own his own hair salon and then lease out the booth space to other people. So this is something he potentially really wants to do and he had the opportunity to run all of the numbers and do the finances. Shay La Barne and Shay Engler worked together on the independent business plan and did a photography business. Samian McCola and Emmanuel Marquez, independent business plan as well and did an app that, theirs is very complicated, but it's very, it's a really neat and innovative idea where their app gives coupons and discounts to people. And it was a really neat process for them to go through that. Austin Marshall and Colson Taborsky worked together on a startup business plan, which you have in front of you. I think it's the third plan. They went on to make state finalists and scored 95 out of 100 points and still didn't go on to internationals to show how competitive that was. But they did fantastic and so they created a business. Hector Hector and Jonathan Meadows, Abigail Stevens, created a startup business plan for a self-defense class. Rebecca Gonzalez competed in Principles of Marketing, which is a role play event where she basically interviews with a judge. Jayden Gonzalez and Samantha Turner, also that project is in front of you. Theirs was really neat. They competed last year. They were my two to come back and they created a marketing campaign for the local escape room, Think in a Box. And they actually got to work with the owner of Think in a Box, create this actual business campaign. She actually was kind enough to share her finances and talk about the struggles that she went through through COVID and how that shutting down her business impacted her and what she had to do to stay alive during that process. And they were able to help create a marketing campaign to keep her going. And that was an invaluable experience for them. They actually scored 98 out of 100 points at district and scored the highest out of any other team that competed. So they did fantastic. They also made state finalists. So that one is in front of you as well. Thomas Hodge, Project Management Business Solutions, created a marketing campaign for a hot sauce company. That was a really fun project. Braylon Netto, Project Management Community Awareness. She did our community service project. Something we pride ourselves on is making sure that students understand the importance of giving back to our community, not only as a student, but someday in their potential career and the importance of doing that as a business someday. And so she worked with the local animal shelter to, due to COVID, the pet costume contest was canceled and everybody was very sad. And so she made that happen virtually and worked with them tirelessly, even while she had COVID and made it happen and raised a bunch of money for them, a bunch of awareness and not only made state finalists, but made it to international competition. And she competed there virtually and did wonderful. Robert Kessler competed in retail merchandising series, which is another interview thing and he also did wonderful. Of my 23 students, I actually have 15 graduating. We have eight coming back. We are super excited. We already have six committed on top of that to do projects next year, but I think we can get a whole lot more. So we've got some pictures of the fun that we had. Here we are in the studios trying to record virtual presentations. It was a challenge to do that in the middle of the water disaster and the ice week. That's when we competed, was altering that. But they did wonderful. They work really hard and we're super excited. So this is also some neat pictures. They got, the C T E program got us a 3D printer this year. And so we have been encouraging our students to create products and design things that solve problems and then actually be able to 3D print those to build a marketing campaign and a business plan for those items. So we do some really cool stuff in the entrepreneurship classes and we really appreciate your support in helping make classes like this happen that really impact the future of our students. So thank you all so much.
Thank you, Ms. Ward, for your passion that truly passes on to the students. And we just wanted to show you these because these are the ways that we help our children with their individual hopes and dreams and we want you to be able to see how they're doing it in the classrooms and how it's going to potentially help them in their future. So again, we just want to say thank you and congratulations to our students. And we've got, we're almost done with recognitions. We're getting there.
I'm going to quickly introduce Ms. Hubner. She's going to discuss our TRI symposium. So I'll let her give you all the great details.
Perfect act to follow for TRI. So TRI is our Texas Research Institute of Young Scholars. It's Dr. Carolyn Bonds, named after her. And our students at the elementary school level, research projects, and I can just see them doing things like that, that Ms. Ward was just talking about. So this year was a little bit different. We didn't get to hold our TRI symposium like we normally do and have community people come in. So instead we had principals, ICs, counselors and many of our admin building staff go and do the judging. And I actually think that that worked out really great because now we all got to see and be a part of it and I, it was very special. So our kids are wonderful. They work really hard to research. They find a mentor in their field and they work alongside of them and just learn how to research and dig deeper and critically think through things. So that's it. Next.
Thank you, Ms. Hubner.
Okay, we continue with our special recognitions by honoring an outstanding community partner and supporter of public education and literacy, the United Way of the Concho Valley. This dedicated group fights for the education, health and financial stability of all individuals in the 14 counties of the Concho Valley, including many S I S D families. It is their mission to work together with community partners to address root causes of poverty, to not only deliver hope, but bring lasting change. As you know, our students become strong, helping our students become strong readers is one way to help United Way in this mission and to set our students up for success. So today we recognize the United Way for their partnership and support of our San Angelo Reads Community Wide Literacy Initiative. Like San Angelo I S D, United Way understands the importance of reading and even has their own program, United We Read, an event they created to promote reading to and with children. Earlier this month, United Way supported us by providing over 1,000 copies of a book, Pug the Star, to gift each and every one of our S I S D second graders, along with a fun activity so our students could create, supporting our learner profile attributes. Importantly, they also provided us Spanish language copies to provide English language learners for our second graders. Our second graders were so excited to get their very own copy to take home to read. That's books in the hands of kids to take home to continue to inspire a love of reading. United Way of the Concho Valley CEO and President Ashley Ammons and Community Impact and Marketing Director Aspen Robert also joined us for a fun read aloud at Goliad Elementary. I encourage you to watch it on our YouTube channel or check it out on our Facebook page if you haven't. What a special gift it is to promote reading and learning beyond the classroom walls. Tonight, we are honored to have joining with us and accepting this recognition for United Way, Aspen Robert. If you could please come forward. And Dr. Detloff and members of the board and attendees at this time, would you please help me recognize the United Way for all they do for our community, families and students?
We appreciate your, thank you.
All right, guys, we're close. On May 4th, San Angelo I S D's Community Wide Literacy Initiative, San Angelo Reads, participated in a powerful 24 hour giving event here in the Concho Valley, San Angelo Gives. With the support of our community and the generosity of the donors that day, San Angelo Reads was able to raise $3,648.42, 46 cents to directly impact our students' love of reading above and beyond what happens in the classroom. These funds will help us to continue to support reading for our students over the summer break by providing the necessary funds to purchase books for our summer reading patrol, which will start as soon as school is over and we'll get some of our admin team together and deliver books directly to our students' houses. So we're really excited to start that program and we want to thank everyone who donated on behalf of our students, our staff and our admin for their generous support.
Thank you, all ladies. And I know it's, it's great for us to be able to recognize all of our students and you know, something we're real proud of in San Angelo is that we recognize, we have opportunities for all students and we get a great opportunity to, for those students to succeed and be successful in so many different ways. There's a lot of schools that, and a lot of people in the state that are concerned just about what our kids do on a test one day of the year. And what we're concerned about is having success and being able to celebrate success of all of our students. So you can see just a portion of that success that we've had on display this evening. So it's with great pride, this board has been able to provide programs and opportunities for students of all types, of all different races, of all different socioeconomic groups, for them to be successful and for us to celebrate that success. So it's, it's a big deal for us and I appreciate our team and all the work y'all did to bring this together tonight. So thank y'all. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Detloff now for a board member recognition.
Yes, sir. Mr. Lehman, members of the board, I am honored to present to you a big reason for the success that Mr. Lehman mentioned over the course of the years. And tonight we get to celebrate and honor Art Hernandez. Art Hernandez was first elected to the Board of Trustees in May of 2006. Since that time, for 15 years, he has helped the board through transformation, stewardship and built a legacy of excellence in service. A staunch supporter of meeting the unique needs of each and every child in the S I S D, Art embraces the chance to make a positive impact on the youth of our community. Mr. Hernandez's leadership has helped the board evolve into a school board that is recognized across the state. recognized across the state for their dedication, unification, and positive impact on student academic success. Art believes in the attributes of our learner profile that you heard earlier, communicator, creator, collaborator, and critical thinker, and knows it's the school's mission to develop rounded, well-rounded individuals who are equipped for the changing landscape of the future. It's well-known in educational research that school boards set the bar for excellence in a school district. They also set the conditions for learning through policy, advocacy, and approving the financial decisions that drive student success. Mr. Hernandez is a product of our school system, and through his service and leadership, our board has continued to make decisions that improve learning for all students. Art has blessed our board with his wonderful family, many who are here this evening, and it has been our privilege to know them. Through Art's dedication and persistence, coupled with the wisdom of our entire board team, our board has created a thriving school district. Art's 15 years of servant leadership has been a blessing for this community and school. I will deeply miss his sense of humor, wonderful smile, and his caring heart for people. And I will certainly miss the friendly banter between him and Mr. Gallegos. The community of San Angelo and our school district are in a better place because of you. Thank you, Art Hernandez. You are truly a champion of children. And Mr. Hernandez, at this time, if you will come up, we have a special recognition for you and a symbol of our appreciation for your years of service. And Becky has stepped behind closed doors to get this, so.
Is it a picture of me?
No, no.
And so we would like to present this to Mr. Hernandez. And the description at the bottom says, "Art, please accept this historic image in appreciation of your dedication and contributions to the children of San Angelo through your service on the SAISD School Board, 2006 to 2021." Thank you, Art Hernandez.
Yeah, let me say a few words. Oh, I'm going to speak up?
You burned that privilege.
I'm going to stay right here. Well, ooh. In fact, that picture, my, my youngest son, Adrian, is in the band. That was his freshman year at the freshman campus. So that, when I saw that picture, it meant a lot to me. So I had asked Dr. Deathloff, and I didn't think I was going to get it, but that's a nice surprise. And also, I want to thank all the... This is not easy. My fellow board members, for all the wonderful years that we've had. I've learned a lot from each and one of you, especially Gerard, you know? I think we were always together and I remember we went to one of the conventions and we got lost on the way back to the hotel and...
No, we didn't.
But we had such a great time together. I learned a lot. And like Dr. Deathloff said, my number one thing was our students. And when I got on the, on the school board, my, my agenda was dropout rate, especially for the Hispanic students. And I thank God that with the PACE program, I think, I don't know if it's in the last three years, that we've graduated over 1,000 kids that probably would have just dropped out of school and taken off and, you know, not had a chance to, to get their diploma. So that was a really nice program that we've, we've had and I'm sure we're going to continue having here in our district. It's gonna, it's gonna be tough, like tonight. I love recognitions. I've always been very competitive. So competitions like this and, and especially, you know, winning state, you know, Texas is a big state and I think we have over 1,500 districts in our, in our state. So when you win state, you know, that's a pretty big deal. And I just want to thank all the administration for also always being here for me. I would come up and ask questions or if I needed something, they will always receive me with open arms and would try to help me with everything that I needed. So, and to Ms. Arroyo, if you ever need any help, we'll be here to help you. And enjoy your, your journey that you're about to start. I had a great time and it's, it's hard to leave, but sometimes you just got to move on to different things. And in fact, I did 20, 25 years in the funeral business and now I'm working with a company that makes 85% of the sutures in the world. And it's very exciting to work there. So that's another part of my journey that I'm starting. So thank you, everybody. Guys, I'm going to miss you. And I'll still come around and visit, so, or we go to lunch or we play golf or something. So, but thank y'all very much for everything.
Yeah, and Grace, thank you too for, for everything. And I'll open it up to our board team if anyone wants to say anything specific about Art. I think what we see tonight in Art is what we, as a board team, saw all the years that we served with him, is someone that's passionate and emotional and someone that cares about kids. And so I don't know of anybody that better, better, is better suited to serve on this board than Art Hernandez. So thank you, Art, for all you, all you did for our board and the times that we laughed with, with you and the times that we laughed at Gerard. We've had a lot of fun. So thank you and certainly for him to have served that long. And I think the last four years he served, I, I personally insisted that he serve an additional four years and he stepped up to the challenge. So I'm very thankful for, for you and for your family and, and so grateful for, for your service to our community. So thank you, Art. So. Sure.
Hello, Art. No, I just want to tell you, Art, thank you for everything you've done. You know, I've always made it known with the board that we, we grew up together. You know, we, we met each other in seventh grade and, and junior high and, and our paths crossed and we knew each other well. We became good friends and then we went our separate ways and we came, you know, we met again here and we've been around each other for the last 15 years. And, you know, it's, it's, it's been wonderful. It's been a pleasure serving with you and it's been an honor to, to be here with you the last 15 years. We've done a lot. This board has done a lot. And a lot of it was with you and I want to thank you, okay, my friend. All right? Take care, Art.
Yes, sir. Okay. We will move forward. Thanks, Art. Thanks, Grace. Now we'll move to item five, which is to consider the certificate of election. It says, yeah, that's it. So I get to sign these. I'll read it. It says, the first one says, this is to certify that at an election, in a general election held May 1st, 2021, Bill Dindel was duly elected to school board trustee, single member District One, San Angelo Independent School District, and shall serve the term of office through May 3rd, 2025, or until replaced by duly elected successor. In test, in testimony whereof, I have herein to sign my name and cause the San Angelo Independent School District sealed to be affixed. This is the 17th day AD of 2021. And that's, I will sign that. And then, and also, we have one for Dr. Kingman, A. Taylor Kingman, one for Ms. Maizelle Flint, and then one for our newest elected board member, Ms. Lupita Arroyo. So I will sign those and, and that's all I need to do for that action item, correct, Becky? Okay. So that, the action here is that I sign those and we issue them to the elected candidates. Our next item is, statement of elected appointed officer. Each newly elected and appointed trustee, before taking oath or affirmation of office and entering upon the, the duty's office, shall sign the required officer's statement. The statements shall be retained with the official records in the office. Statements of the elected appointed officer have been prepared for the candidates that were elected in single member districts one, two, three, and four, and have been provided to the board. And the recommend, recommended board access has had the elected candidates for single member districts one, two, three, and four execute the statements of elected appointed officer. And now, Becky, are we ready? Now we will have the oath of office. I think we do this to Judge Dusick every year. We, we did it last year and, and she was worried about being late and I'm sitting there thinking, there's no way you're going to be late. And, and now I feel awful because, because she, she could have maybe spent the night somewhere before finishing this. But we are honored to have Judge Carmen Dusick again here to swear in our, our new board members, thank you for taking the time to be here.
I'm happy to be here.
Okay.
And I, and I spent all day picking and paneling a jury, so this is a nice way to end my day.
That's good. Well, thank you for your patience and, and thank you for being here and thank you for what you do for our community. We really appreciate it. So if y'all want to move forward, we can do all together, correct?
I believe so. And if y'all want to be done separately. And what are my mask rules?
You're okay without a mask.
I'm fully vaccinated.
Okay, that's, okay. I guess, yeah. Yeah, I think down there, don't you think?
Can I get each of you to please raise your right hand? Do each of you, hold on. I almost put you under oath. Hold on. And we don't want to administer the jury oath. That would be bad, too. All right, here we, here we go. "In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas, do each of you solemnly swear or affirm that you will faithfully execute the duties of the Office of School Board Trustee for San Angelo Independent School District of the State of Texas and will, to the best of your ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state, so help you God." Congratulations?
So they'll sign that and again, Judge Dusick, thank you so much for being here. We appreciate it.
It's a delight and I love getting to see the student recognition. I'm sorry I missed some of them.
Thank you. I'll tell you what, whether anyone else needs a break, let, let me, before we take a break, recognize Lupita's family. If y'all wouldn't mind coming forward and, and making sure that, I'm, I'm sitting here watching her children and how well they've been behaved during the whole process. And I'm thinking, I'm thinking, wow.
And they're twins.
What, what an awesome family, you know? So we, we, as the board president, let me thank y'all for letting us borrow your mother and your wife and, and let her serve in this capacity. I think she's going to find it really rewarding. There'll be times when you might miss her being there and you might wish that she was with you a little bit more often, but I promise you, she's going to be doing great work. And so we appreciate y'all being here and, and thank you for supporting her now and for supporting her as she moves forward in this, in this capacity. So thank y'all very much.
And we promised that our board meetings won't take this long.
That's right, that's right.
They're not always this long.
Yeah, we're, we're really pretty good. This is a bad example, but we're good, having good meetings.
Can I, can I just add one thing? One of my most treasured pictures is of my family the first night that I got sworn in. So could they maybe get a picture?
Sure, sure.
I just think that it would mean so much to you later.
And I'll, I'll say one more thing before we take a break. You know, when we, when we try to find a new board member, we, we, we try to do our homework and we try to make sure that when we get a new board member, it's, it's going to be somebody that, that cares about all kids, one, and someone that cares about the community that they represent. And what we do first is, in, in many cases, is go out and talk to principals and other people that are involved at the schools where, that make up that district. And when you go out and ask people within that community what Ms. Arroyo means to that school and that that community what Ms. Royal means to that school and that community, it's so encouraging to me for her to be a member of our board team. So all I've heard is fabulous things about her. And so we're excited to have her as a partner on our board and we look forward to all the contributions you're going to make. So thank you for choosing to run for the board and thank you for winning and making sure that, and making sure that you brought your family along with you. So we thank you. So let's take a brief recess and brief, by that I mean like maybe five minutes, and we'll maybe conclude our business in about 30 minutes after that. So thanks. Okay, so we'll try to start back with our meeting. We're at item eight, which is the approval of our minutes. Do we have a motion to approve our minutes?
Motion for approval, second.
We have a motion for Mr. Dindal and a second for Mr. Gallegos to approve the minutes of our April 12th, 2021 special finance and pre-agenda meeting and our April 19th, 2021 regular board meeting. Are there comments or questions from our board team concerning our minutes? Any public comment? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Next, I don't think we have anybody signed up for public comment except, we have a gentleman who's contacted Ms. Hopkins and asked if we would call him and he can make comments to us over the phone. And hopefully, if he's not asleep, we'll try to make that happen. His name is Jesus Mendoza and he knows what our protocol is. When he talks to us, we're not, if it's something that's not on our agenda, we're not required or not allowed to respond. And also, he's going to do his best to limit his comments to five minutes. So we're going to try to call him at this time and allow him to do public comment because he's not able to come up here personally to make comments. And we told him the same thing. We told Judge Dusick that we'd probably do this about 7:30, so.
This is Becky from San Angelo ISD. I hope I'm not calling you too late. Good. We're just now getting to the public comment portion. So are you ready for your comment? Okay, let me, okay, I'm going to put John speaker. Hold on just one moment. Mr. Mendoza, can you hear me?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Okay, go ahead.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Jesus Mendoza and I have been homebound for more than 10 years with a life-threatening electrohypersensitivity, EHS, which is caused and aggravated by exposure to some wireless micro-irradiation reaching children and teachers as poof. I have been violent peed several times. I'm sleep deprived and in pain all the time. Every day it is a different torture. This is a horrible way to die. My EHS has been recognized by federal and state agencies and by courts as a physical medical condition and as a disability. EHS proves conclusively that exposure to levels of radiation below the federal safety limits causes severe harm and disabilities, and that exposing children to micro-irradiation defeats the purpose of education. It is estimated that without knowing, more than 50% of the population is already suffering symptoms of EHS. Children, teachers, doctors, attorneys, and even a director of the World Health Organization are suffering from EHS. Please see WeAreTheEvidence.org. Despite the fact that electro-sensitivity is reaching pandemic proportions, most doctors are in the dark or in denial and continue misdiagnosing and mistreating with harmful drugs and invasive procedures, symptoms that disappear with your reducing exposure to micro-irradiation. A law firm filed a federal lawsuit with evidence of house cell phones used by your children amid more than five times the levels allowed by federal law, when even short doses of radiation above the federal safety limits causes harm even to healthy and strong adults. And seven law firms are warning school officials of the potential civil and criminal ability to expose and clean unnecessary to harmful micro-5G radiation when an expensive hard-wired broadband internet is readily available. According to Dr. Perse, electro-sensitivity is not an isolated set of symptoms, but ongoing injuries to the immunological and neurological system, which can be aggravated by exposure to micro-irradiation and are potentially reversible. Some of the symptoms of EHS include pain, swelling of vital organs, swelling of face, hair and eye, symptoms of heart attack and stroke, rashes and loss of skin, flu and allergy symptoms of stomach, and digestive problems, insomnia, vision, hearing memory, speech concentration, and breathing problems, testicular and ovarian pain, dry lips, tongue and mouth, inordinate thirst, dehydration, altered blood sugar levels, impaired sense of smell, miscarriages, and birth defects. Scientific studies prove most doctors are confounding the symptoms of electro-sensitivity with symptoms of other illnesses, including autism, ADHD, dyslexia, PTSD, heart attack, stroke, multiple sclerosis, fibromyalgia, hypoterrorism, Parkinson's, Alzheimer's, rheumatoid arthritis, 21/4 syndrome, diabetes, and major depression and suicidal tendencies. The above is detailed in the request to protect our children submitted to the Secretary of the U.S. Department of Education, Dr. Miguel Cardona, and posted on the case materials, OJ Mendoza, at wirelesswatchblog.ort. Ladies and gentlemen, your prompt response to this evidence can save the lives of children and teachers and other defenseless and unsuspecting victims. Thank very much for giving serious consideration to this matter. Respectfully, thank you again, ladies and gentlemen.
Can I talk to him? Thank you, thank you for making those comments to us. And if you would do the board a favor and send those comments in a written form, and we can include those in the minutes of our meeting. Do you mind doing that? Perfect, perfect. Okay, well, thank you so much.
So what I did is ask him, I think because he felt like he had a time limit, he was speaking pretty fast and I couldn't understand everything that he had to say. And I want to make sure that we were especially attentive to, you know, what he had to say. So I asked him if he would send, you know, his, send us a copy of his comments in written form. So he said he was prepared to do that and would do that for us. So let's move forward to reports. Our student enrollment report we received as part of our board packet, we are down about the same as we've been down all year versus the same timeframe last year. So the 31st Monday of school, which was April 26, 2021, we're down 539 students. We still have 1,993 students that are virtual, but the rest of our students are participating in class. That covers our student enrollment report. Our next report's item B, which is a fifth and sixth weeks average daily attendance report. Our average daily attendance is down almost 3%. Again, that mirrors what we've done the first four, six weeks reports, but that's, so that's not a surprise to us. Most districts across the state have experienced anywhere from 3% to 5% decline in enrollment. So we're, I hate to say, but we're close to average on that. Next, we have an update on our academic programs and Dr. Ritter's prepared to do that for us. Dr. Ritter.
Thank you, Mr. Lehman, Dr. Detloff, and members of the board. And so this evening, we were very fortunate and excited to host a STEM Expo with some of our elementary students that you got to participate in and see some of the work that they've been doing in their STEM labs in our elementary schools. And tonight, we also have, in addition to that, we have our elementary curriculum and instruction team led by Director Ricky Black, who, they're going to come forward and do a short presentation on some of our instructional programs in elementary, just to give you some of the highlights from the year. And we just want to thank you so much for your support, that being able to have our students in person and experiencing the things that they have and you got to see and talk to some of those kids today. And they were so excited to meet you and to show you the things they were learning and with the things that you have approved for us and the programs you got to actually experience and see some of those amazing STEM robots and other things that we had down there for you to see. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Ricky Black. Thank you.
Thank you. It's kind of, I want to just say I'm proud to be an American, but I really want to say I'm proud to be a San Angelo ISD member and employee because of all the great things that we heard tonight and I hope that you saw during our STEM Expo downstairs. So with that being said, I do want you to know that the snow, COVID, and water damages did not stop our elementary kids. And so we want to give you a quick update from my awesome team here. And we'll start with Lorraine Campos and Brandon Lagon that work in the STEM, which is math and science. And we promise we'll be really brief.
So I just wanted to share with you guys some of the things that we've been doing this school year. Math Solutions, this is our third year with our partnership with Math Solutions. This year, we focused on instructional coaches and we had virtual professional learning due to COVID restrictions. We have also this year, we piloted STEM Scopes Math the spring semester. We will be, STEM Scopes Math will be available to all elementary students and teachers next school year. And this is a program that really focuses on a concrete representational and abstract mathematics approach, which really leads to a deeper conceptual understanding. Also, we have Z-Space at campuses, which you guys were able to kind of see today, this evening before our meeting. And it is an augmented and virtual reality solution for immersive, interactive, multisensory learning experience. And yes, I had to read that. We also have STEM Labs this year and our focus this year with our STEM Labs was to get all 17 elementary campuses with STEM Labs up and running. And the STEM Labs really focus on opportunities for students to learn through design thinking while working through various STEM projects. Also, all of our SAI ISD fifth grade students participate in 25 hours of challenging hands-on, mind-on activities and STEM activities at Goodfellow Air Force Base with our partnership with them as well.
And then next, we have our literacy coach and literacy coordinator, and they're going to update you with literacy.
I know we've already spoken briefly about San Angelo Reads. We wanted to touch on it as well as how it pertains to the elementary. It continues to gain momentum in our community as well as in our elementary schools. In addition to the Facebook Lives that we've talked about already, where guest speakers come in and read to various classrooms, we have in our schools now some place, somewhere set up that focuses on San Angelo Reads. It may be promoting a specific book, specific genre, how many books have been read, but there's somewhere on the campus that speaks of San Angelo Reads and the impact that it's having. We also very recently, as mentioned before, have had a meeting and have planned great things to come this summer, and we're really excited about that. Moving on to our work with Scholastic, we've partnered with them for several years now. Due to COVID restrictions, we shifted our focus a little bit this year and we set them up to work with our instructional coaches. They provided professional learning sessions that were geared to the needs of our instructional coaches. And then they followed that up with a day on campus, working side by side with our coaches to move that work forward. This way of adding capacity to our instructional coaches and supporting them on the spot has been extremely beneficial. Several of our coaches have said, in fact, that this year with Scholastic has had the biggest impact, the best learning that they've ever had in their career. And then finally, speaking briefly on reading academies, we have one cohort that we have started with, and that actually is also our instructional coaches. And we will be adding in three more cohorts this summer. And the Texas Reading Academies came out of House Bill III. They created the academies, they created the content. And TEA states that to implement high-quality scientifically-based reading instruction, teachers need pre-service training, ongoing professional learning, and access to evidence-based curricula. And while the content has been created by TEA, it aligns perfectly with the work that we are doing in our district already. The content speaks of the importance of building a strong literacy community. We're doing that with San Angelo Reads. It agrees with the responsive teaching philosophy of Francis and Pennell and the abundance of rich literature that that resource provides. It also promotes the importance of small group instruction using leveled readers, which we are doing with Scholastic Guided Reading. Reading, we know, is not something that can be taught and learned overnight. The learning is complex and it's ongoing. The reading academies, as well as everything else we are doing, support our district in its journey to create lifelong learners and develop them into highly successful adults.
And then finally, we have our fine arts led by our director.
How are y'all? Okay, so we're doing some great things at the elementary school level in fine arts. We have 17, all 17 elementary school campuses have a music teacher and they just have had a lot of fun, even with the COVID restrictions, you know, just teaching the foundations of music and just having students learn to love music. It's great. And then we have one art teacher for all 17 elementary school campuses. So she travels between all schools and she works with, oh, first graders and second graders. And, you know, that's got to be like the best job ever. So she's just enjoying it. It's great that we still have art at the elementary school level. She's doing something really neat this year. On Fridays, she is offering art to her like fourth and fifth graders on that campus, and they're doing it, incorporating it in the curriculum. So the other day, they did circuits and they had copper wire and they, it's really neat. They used this copper wire and then they made a light bulb go off and then they created their own art picture out of it. So I love how she's incorporating all of that into our curriculum as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Detloff, board, and Dr. Ritter, for all your support in our pursuit for excellence in elementary.
So much. And do y'all have any questions or any comments at all for them? Thank you all so much. This is great. This team is amazing and they do phenomenal work.
I've thanked everybody else for their patience. I thank y'all for y'all's patience as well. Thank y'all for being here. I thank y'all for what you do every day to take care of our kids. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Just a comment. The presentation the kids gave today downstairs was just amazing what they were doing. I couldn't believe half the stuff those kids were doing. I was like, my God, kindergarten kids. So I was just really impressed with what they're doing. So y'all are doing great, guys. Doing great.
I never left one table. I was so, you know, I was just infatuated. It was a lot of fun. So.
We know, we saw it.
I know. I knew you were going to accuse me of that, so I went ahead and told everybody anyway. So we'll move to consent items. Do we have a motion to approve consent items A through J?
Motion to approve consent items A through J is outlined in our board packet. Second.
So we have a motion from Dr. Kingman and a second from Ms. Mizel Flint. Item A is to consider donations. Special note on donations, we had $1,500 donated for the Special Olympics. Most of that's been raised by Ms. LaMester, who's the principal Lone Star Middle School. So we appreciate those who gave and also Ms. LaMester for kind of heading that up every year. Item B is consider acceptance of the audit engagement letter from I. Bailey CPAs and business advisors. They've been our, the folks that have done our audit. I think this will be the third year that they'll be doing our audit. Is that right, Bill? Item C is consider approval of bids for Child Nutrition Department for 2021, excuse me, 2021, 2022. That's for direct delivery produce and high-volume items and that awards. That's for direct delivery produce and high-volume items, and that awards, being awarded to Cisco Foods. Item Ds, consider approval of bids for Child Nutrition Department for prepared pizza products. Item Es to consider hazardous walking zones. Item Fs to consider allotment, antique certification, T E K S certification. Item G is to consider bid number 20-009 for maintenance, transportation, miscellaneous supplies. Item H is to consider bid number 20-014 for curriculum and instructional materials. Item Is to consider pre-kindergarten adoption, and item Js to consider application for another waiver, and that has to do with our application to the TEA for days that we missed this year because of water concerns back in February. So those are items A through J. And I would remind those in the boardroom, as well as those that might be watching this on our public access channel, that we discussed all of these items at our pre-agenda board workshop that happened last Monday. So do we have any questions or comments, or anybody needs to pull any of those items? Do we have any public comment? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is item 12, consider Bill's accounts and financial statements for April of 2021. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
So we have a motion from Mr. Dindel, and a second from Mr. Gallegos to approve our Bill's accounts and financial statements for the month of April 2021. Is there any additional board comment concerning our?
Mr. Lehman, just as you mentioned earlier, as you spoke, we review all of these items in our pre-agenda meeting last week in detail.
Thank you, Bill. We do do that. And if somebody has any, wants some sleeping material, then they can look that up on our website and review that. I would kind of have an open checkbook, so anybody can go out there and look that up. Other comments, any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is item 13, to consider donated funds for San Angelo Reads. Mal, anything specific we need to know there?
So all our previous donations for San Angelo Reads, books to give to our kids. So we're, one of our goals for San Angelo Reads this year is to get a book into the hands of every one of our elementary school students. So far, we've had books, and these are direct copies of books that have been donated for our 1st, 2nd, and 3rd graders. For our kindergarten, 4th, and 5th grade students, we have received funds to be allocated for the books to be purchased, which CNI has already approved the books. So we just need your approval, so we can purchase them in time to give to our students before the school year ends.
Perfect. So, and those folks that helped us with those donations are Lone Star Beef, Diego's Burrito, Atmos Energy, and then we have an anonymous donor that donated $1,000 for us to get Little Red Hen for kindergarten students. Atmos Energy donated $4,500 for Hank the Cow Dog. Ranch Life, that's for, Ranch Life won for 4th grade students. Diego's Burritos donated $2,000 for Little Red Hen, again, for kindergarten students and their families. And Lone Star Beef donated $4,950 for Hank the Cow Dog Ranch Life. So again, those are folks that are helping us take on this initiative to make sure that the community is continuing to read, and we're encouraging households to read. So that's what we need to do. So we have, do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the donated funds to provide books to our kindergarten 4th and 5th grade students through our community-wide literacy initiatives, San Angelo Reads.
Thanks, Mr. Gallegos. We have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Dindel. Any questions or comments from our board team? Any further comment? Public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. That motion passes. Our next item is, Mr. Henry's gonna briefly go over that for us, and that has to do with RFQ number 21-006, which is for San Angelo Stadium lighting and repairs.
Thank you for having me here tonight. During the May 2020 storm, several of our facilities sustained lighting damage. This ranged from fixtures needing to be replaced to just eyebrow replacement. Two facilities, San Angelo Stadium and Central Tennis Complex, have fixtures that require full replacement for the fixture to be fixed from the hail damage. Both facilities have old lighting technology consisting of metal highlight. It was the administration's belief that this was the time for us to make the adjustment to LED lighting. The new lighting will come with a 25-year warranty, new wiring from the top of the pole to the control box, dimmable lighting, color show, wireless web-based controls, and 24-hour monitoring. Two vendors replied to this by-board RFQ. With the assistance of a scoring team, questions were answered, and the bid was scored. The administration recommends awarding this bid to Musco Lighting. Musco will do all repairs and upgrade work. Insurance will pay, will cover $175,759.57. The district will fund the remaining $551,290.43 from general fund. Total cost of this project is $727,050, which includes a $40,000 contingency. Y'all have any questions?
Thanks, Mr. Henry. We did discuss this at our bridge in the board workshop. I think we had a number of questions. Anybody have any further questions?
No, I was just gonna say, I think the, for the public, I think the thing we need to understand is that at some point, we're gonna have to replace those lights. And right now, we can replace them and get $175,000 worth of insurance money to replace them with a 25-year warranty. So it is costing the district some money this year, but it, in the long run, it's gonna be cheaper for the district to get that done when we can upgrade with some insurance money as well.
Thanks, Dr. Kingman. And certainly, last week, we talked, at our meeting, we talked a lot about how much our maintenance team has to do to repair our current fixtures, and, you know, how much, how labor-intensive that is. These will be much less labor-intensive, so that part will save us money in the long term as well. Other questions or comments?
In addition, Mr. Lehman, since we're gonna move to LED lighting, we should be, have some savings from moving from metal hail light bulbs to the LED platform.
Correct. So do we have a motion and a second? That's what I thought. So we have Mr. Dindel makes a motion. Dr. Kingman makes a second. Any further board comment? Any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Our motion passes. Our next is to consider RFQ number 21-009, which is for tennis court resurfacing. And Mr. Henry can briefly cover that as well.
During the budgeting process, athletics requested to resurface six courts at Lakeview High School and the two remaining at Glenn Middle School. A request for quotes was posted on by-board and six, with six vendors. We received one response from Hellis Construction. The administration recommends contracting with Hellis Construction for the resurfacing of six tennis courts at Lakeview and two at Glenn Middle School for a turnkey price of $51,436.
Thanks, Jason. Another item we discussed last week, and something that we need to continue to maintain our facilities, and this allows us to do that. So I make a motion that we approve contracting with Hellis Construction for the resurfacing of six tennis courts at Lakeview High School and two at Glenn Middle School for the total price of $51,436. Do we have a second? So motion from Mr. Lehman, a second from Mr. Gallegos. Further board comment or questions? Any public comment? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is item 17, oh, excuse me, 16, is consider recommendations for personnel for school year 2021, 2022. We do have one at our, at our, that was left at our place as an addendum in addition to those that are included in our board packet. So that makes a total of, it looks like 12 contract recommendations. So anybody have any questions about any of those? We usually put this on our consent, but I let it slip by this time. So we will, do we have a motion to approve recommendations for employment for 2021 and 2022?
Second.
So we have a motion from Mr. Gallegos, and a second from Dr. Kingman. Other board comments or questions concerning superintendent's recommendations for personnel? Any public comment? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Our motion passes. Our next item is announcements. We've got page graduation. Okay, sorry. 17 is consider superintendent's recommendation for teacher and other professional contracts. Thank you. Right. Yeah. That was part of our Friday fax information. So that's our professional contracts primarily. So do we have a motion to approve item 17, which is teacher and other professional contracts?
Move for approval of the superintendent's recommendations as presented under separate cover.
So we have a motion from Mr. Dindel, and a second from Mr. Gallegos. Further comment or questions from our board team? Any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Our motion passes. Thanks, Becky. Announcements, our page graduation is May 27 at 6:00 p.m. at the McNeese Convention Center, I think. Do we have someone accepting the class? Ms. Hopkins? We? I think we have a, I think we had several that said they would be there, so that takes care of it. I think Mr. Underwood's gonna briefly review our high school graduations, since we're doing something significantly different than what we've historically done. So I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Underwood.
President Lehman, Board of Trustees, Dr. Detloff. Yeah, we're excited to be having an in-person graduation this year. It's gonna be different than, well, of course, what we had last year, so we're looking forward to that. We're gonna be getting kicked off with our graduations for Central and Lakeview, which are gonna be held on May 29, both at 9:00 a.m. Central will be at San Angelo Stadium, Lakeview will be at Lakeview Stadium. Just wanted to give you guys a few updates. We're gonna be starting off here at the administration building at 8, between 8:00 and 8:15. If you would like to come up for some breakfast and some coffee and things of that nature. And then we're gonna have a couple of Suburbans on hand to get us to either of the locations, whether we're going to Central, whether you're going to Lakeview graduation. We certainly understand that if you need to take your own vehicle, if that's more convenient for you, and you want a caravan over there, either one of those lake locations, we could certainly do that as well. If you are driving, the Central graduation, there will be board parking available at the Fieldhouse Parking Lot. For Lakeview, that parking is gonna be in the southeast, in, right outside the southeast end zone, which is a grassy area over there. It'll be marked off, and there'll be some parking attendants to receive you there as well, if you choose to drive over that way. As we get closer, we'll provide you with the maps of, just kind of give you an idea of the layout and everything, that as we get closer on that as well. Currently, we have down for Central graduation, Mr. Parker, Ms. Mizelle Flint, Dr. Kingman, and Mr. Gallegos. And then for the Lakeview graduation, Mr. Dindel, Ms. Arroyo, and welcome to the board. And then Mr. Hernandez, if he so chooses to attend as well. So those are a couple of updates. If we do have to utilize our bad weather plan, we're gonna hope that that holds, as we've been looking at the forecast eagerly every day. We're looking for that 10-day forecast that's going out. And right now, the forecast models that we're looking at look pretty good, but if we do happen to have to use that. We've got to give Mr. Creek and his wonderful crew have been working with us, doing walkthroughs, and making sure all of our facilities are ready to go. We got to give them a little bit of time to get everything set up over in our alternate site, which is the San Angelo Coliseum. So we'd be looking at a 1:30 graduation for Lakeview and a 5:00 graduation for Central.
Also, I just want to highlight the work that Mr. Underwood has accomplished with our two high school principals, as well as David Creek and our maintenance team. And so these efforts have involved multiple meetings with both of our high schools in maintenance and operations. So I appreciate Wes, the work you've done in this area. Also, board team, if there is additional information that I need to know, or if you have a wish for which graduation to attend that's different than what Mr. Underwood stated, please let us know. I think, again, this is a unique school year, because our graduations are running concurrently. The rationale behind that, again, is in past years at outside ceremonies, we had probably a handful of health concerns due to the heat. Also, this year, after, you know, a pandemic, we wanted an outside setting, so families would feel more safe. So in combination, we believe that an early commencement was necessary for both graduations. So that's the rationale for both graduations being held at 9:00 a.m. for weather, and certainly for health and safety of all of our constituents and patrons. So that's the rationale. But please let us know. We, again, will have two vehicles to transport you and some breakfast items and snacks available, or certainly meet us at the destination. So feel free to communicate with me, and if there's things I don't know, I'll get with Wes, and we'll make sure that you're comfortable. Anything else, Wes, that we might be forgetting? So the two ceremonies are outside at 9:00 a.m. Again, inclement weather, we have a contingency plan to move those indoors. One benefit of the outdoor ceremonies this year is we have expanded our ticket allotment for both schools over previous years. So more family members will be able to attend due to these being held outside.
Thanks, Dr. Detloff. And I think that covers everything. Do we, do we need someone to accept the class at Central High School?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so you might work on that. I know Bill's...
Yeah, I've already spoken to the faculty at Lakeview, and they've already asked if I would accept a class.
So Bill's taking care of Lakeview, but usually, you know, Mr. Waters, you know, doesn't really, you know, he's not all excited about that much board involvement to begin with. But, but he, we do have someone that accepts the class, so we need to get somebody to work on that.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get that working on.
All right. So that covers that. That's, that's just two announcements. Finance and pre-agenda board workshop is June the 14th. Regular board meeting is June the 21st. And I sent a note to all of our board team. It's unusual for us to consider selection of officers this late in our meeting, but since Max wasn't gonna be here, and the slate of offers, officers that I'm gonna present, including Max as the president, then we thought it would be better if I ran this meeting, and then we had, we selected officers. And I didn't hear any complaints from any of the board teams. So at this time, if, and we can discuss this if anyone would like, certainly, because it's, the board serves for our public, and those that might be watching on public access channel, the board officers serve at the board's discretion. So our board policy requires that following an election, we have to appoint a new board at the very next, we have to appoint new officers for the board at the very next board meeting, following the election, which is this board meeting. What it doesn't say, or what we, a lot of people don't know, is that the officers of the board serve at the board's discretion. So at any point in time, if we want to change members of the officer, the members as officers of the board, then we can do that. We haven't, I don't know that that's been part of our history, but certainly, on an annual or even a monthly basis, technically, your board officers could change. So we don't spend a lot of time talking about officers and how important they are, but we, and we've had some boards struggle and worry about who's gonna be in each role, and I've been amazed at how well our board gets along and doesn't really care about what position they're in. But with that being said, I'll make, I'll introduce or nominate a slate of officers, and if someone wants to second that, then that would be great. So that, I would nominate Max Parker to be president, Bill Dindel... So that, I would nominate Max Parker to be president, Bill Dindal to be vice president, Gerard Gallegos to be secretary, and Dr. Taylor Kingman to be treasurer. So that's a slate of officers. Does, would anybody second that?
I'll second.
So Amy seconds that. So any further board comment or questions about that? And, you know, people might wonder if, why I'm not gonna be president anymore because, but it's just time for somebody else to, you know, be in this role, and Max said he would be glad to step up, and I think it's, again, a positive for our board team for this change to take place. So any, so that motion, we have a motion and a second. Any board comment?
I just wanted to thank you for your service of all these years that you've spent as president of the board.
Thanks, Amy. Appreciate that. So any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any, one opposed? Perfect. So that takes care of our meeting, and since I'm not the president anymore, I'll let Bill adjourn our meeting as the vice president.
Well, if there's no other business to be had tonight, we'll consider ourselves adjourned.
Thanks, Bill.